Good morning, everybody. And I think we're ready to go online. And here we have many of our executive team members are all probably with us. Thank you, as well as some other staff members. So the City of San Marino obviously appreciates everybody's attendance here as well as online. The meetings, as you know, are held the second Wednesday of every month. So that is next week, we will have our regular council meeting in the evening, as well as the last Friday of every month at 8:30. And pursuant to Executive Order N-2920, members of City Council may teleconference in, but since this is a budget and obviously very important, everybody's here today. So thank you, my fellow council members and Vice Mayor. There's also a coronavirus COVID-19 advisory. Talking about precautions, you could see that on the agenda. And members of the public may observe and offer comments at this meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically. A public comment is accepted by email to the city clerk@cityofsanmarino.org before or during the meeting and prior to the close of the public comments on each item. They'll be read by our staff members and our interim city clerk. And lengthy public comments will be summarized for time. The public comment also can be accepted electronically via Zoom. That's the teleconference module that we have. And all of the dial-in information has been posted more than 72 hours in advance to sign in via computer, via phone, or again submitting public comments via email. And so I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a walk-off, please?
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobowski.
Here.
Councilmember Tal.
Here.
Vice Mayor Yudi.
Here.
And Mayor Shepard Romney.
Here.
Thank you. As we talked about, the posting of agenda has been made to ensure that everybody, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers. Please speak directly into your microphones. As well as when you're commenting, give us a moment to make sure that it comes through clearly in the room if you're commenting via Zoom or other audio. Public comments are accepted in the ways that I outlined before. And we have two people from staff who are helping facilitate us for the Internet users and callers to ensure that everybody can hear and participate. And we will, like our last meeting, take some time in between announcing public comment to make sure that people have adequate time at home to either raise their hand or type in a comment online. So I would like to now ask our acting city clerk, Merlo, to explain how the public comment works.
Thank you, Mayor. So for each item on the agenda, we'll have time for public comment, and we'll accept comments in three ways. First, we'll take in-person comments for each item. And if you'd like to speak this way, please pull out a speaker card, which are found in the lobby by the agendas, and then turn it in to me or one of our staff members. We also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. And that email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record, but we must receive them before the public comment period for that particular item ends. And we may summarize if necessary to limit to under three minutes. We'll then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for comments on Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raise hand feature, which is found by clicking on Participants, and then the Raise Hand button on the bottom right side of the screen. This will let us know you'd like to speak, but we ask you don't use that until it is time for public comment, so that we know which item you'd like to speak on and so that we don't miss your hand raising. And as a second option, you can use the chat box to let us know you would like to speak on a particular item. And again, comments are only accepted until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so does any, the first section that we have always is the City welcomes public input. This is the time for public comments where members of the public may address the City Council by completing a public comment card and giving it to the city clerk prior to the meeting, as well as on our various platforms. I don't know if any public comments have come in today. These are if you wish to speak on items that aren't on the current agenda. So I don't see anybody in the room, but if you can let us know.
We do not have any email comments for items that are not on the agenda, and there are no chat or hand raises.
All right, so then we'll proceed. If anybody has any other thoughts, we've waited long enough, right? We have people listening and nobody has. Okay. So I think that we've going to proceed with our new business. It's the presentation of fiscal year 2020-21, proposed budget for the Community Services Department, operational expenditures, and city's capital improvement plan. But actually, I think we're going to parse that out. So can I have the, we can start with the presentation, please.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. I know that was a mouthful. Thank you for doing that. I just want to start by acknowledging that this has been an extremely challenging week for your staff. The COVID situation was already taxing us, and there have been some additional matters to attend to this week. And so I want to thank everybody for their support and their excellent dedication to, as always, excellence in the face of adversity. And even so, we are here to present to you the final stage of our budget process prior to final adoption, which will occur on June 26th. That's your next Friday meeting. Today's meeting has two components to it. There is the final piece of the operating budget, which is the Community Services Department. And then we will turn to the remaining items from the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. From a procedural perspective, as the mayor indicated, we're going to break this down into pieces to try to make it more manageable for everybody. So first, the Finance Director and I will give an introductory presentation on the library. Then we'll return it to the Council for your discussion and direction. Once we're concluded with library, then we'll pick up recreation. The Finance Director and I will again do an introduction for recreation, and then return it to you for discussion and questions and direction. Probably at that point, we'll be ready for a short recess. And after that short recess, we'll come back. And then again, the Finance Director and I will give you a brief presentation on the CIP, and we'll return it to you for discussion on those items. So moving into community services, I just want to say a few things upfront. As you know, this includes library and recreation. We did make a decision recently, not in the immediate recently, but in the last year or so, to combine the two departments, again, library and recreation, into one community services department. So that is the budget that you see in front of you today. The combining of the two divisions into one department is reflected in the staffing that you see for full-time employees. There's a little bit of movement there, and we'll talk about that as we go into each individual area. But despite the fact that they're one department, they do still function somewhat separately, at least for now, and so we'll still take them separately for you. So moving into library, I just have a few comments, and then I'll turn it over to Director Chung, who has a PowerPoint presentation for you, a brief one as well this morning. In the library budget, there are no staffing changes. There are, however, numbers that look different in the personnel section. So I just want to briefly explain that, as I mentioned earlier, for the combining of the two offices into one department, there was a little bit of reallocation of certain staffing resources that were necessary. So you will see, for example, the Community Services Director position now partially budgeted in library. The analyst position, which was fully budgeted in library, is now budgeted a bit over on the recreation side as well. There are some low percentages of one of the rec supervisors, our rec coordinator, and our clerk typist in recreation, that are being charged over to library. So I just want to acknowledge that although the numbers look a little different, they don't reflect new staffing, they don't reflect new people, they don't reflect new bodies or new positions. It's just a reallocation of some of our existing resources. Otherwise, there are no significant changes to this budget, and I am happy to turn it over to Paul to take it from here.
Thank you, City Manager. Can I get the PowerPoint, please? So let me get back to the start here. So the presentation is going to be relatively similar to last Friday's meeting. And I wanted to get into just a whole picture for Community Services Department as a whole, being that in fiscal year 2021, we're combining both, as City Manager mentioned, recreation with library. And so I know this is really small on the screen, but for City Council, I know you have the PowerPoints in front of you. Overall, for Community Services Department, they're really only going up by less than 1% or $33,000. And as the City Manager had mentioned, it's really, there's contractual increases on the personnel side, but then it's really just a reallocation of most of the personnel going from recreation to library. So you still see a FTE Inc. decrease from 39.6% down to 35.2%. And the main driver of that is, of course, the aquatics, as it's no, it's proposed to be from a city services to a more of a contract services next year. On the services and supplies end, you can see that it's really staying relatively flat from this current fiscal year. There are some ups and downs, meaning on the library side, you do see a decrease, which I'll get into in my next slide, but it's really driven by the computers, the public access computers, the donation that the Library Foundation provided to the city. And that's what's driving that, being that that's a one-time budget for this year, not going into next year. On the recreation side, obviously, there's a lot of changes there, being that we're going to be going into Phase One, but it's mainly the increases, the contractual services for the aquatics, and also some of the contract classes that are being more robust for City Council's input in the community as well. So going into public, the library, their budget is overall increasing by $116,000 or 7.3%. And as you can see, the main increase is from personnel, but it's, as I mentioned, holistically as a department, it's just a reallocation of the personnel budget. And I'm not going into what positions went up or down, being that this City Manager has just expressed, but it's just the positions that she mentioned. It's the Community Services Director, rec supervisor, rec coordinator, clerk typist, and the management analyst that used to reside all in library has now been 50% in library and 50% in recreation. So that increase is what you're seeing on the personnel side, plus the contractual increases for personnel. On the services and supply side, it's really actually decreasing next year. And as I've mentioned, it's the public access computers that's not rolling over into next year, but also there are some increases that the library has requested, such as furniture requests, and also storywalk guideposts. And that's really from the recreation part of their re-envisioning for next year, a program that they're proposing. That really concludes my presentation on the library side. Staff is available for any questions regarding any of the detail that was provided to the Council with the budget packet.
All right, next we'll proceed with questions from the Council. And this is regarding, do you want to take the library specifically, and then overall questions as well, because the summary has changed? Thank you. All right, Councilmember Jacobowski?
Just one question on the library with regard to the new RFID. I am curious that, I see that that has $3,500 in maintenance. And will we be seeing some labor savings elsewhere, since that should result in reallocation of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jacobowski. The, what has happened is this, the RFID system has allowed our clerks to be freed up to take passports. And so our passport income increased until COVID-19, and will be able to continue to increase because there's a self-serve checkout, as well as making it much more efficient to check in books and check them out.
Thank you. So are you saying, then, that we were not able to sufficiently process passports to our potential capacity because of staff shortage over there?
Yes.
So basically, we weren't able to accommodate all the people who wanted to come in for passports.
We were able to, but it was a stretch. This is going to help us a great deal. And we were able to finish tagging all the books in the library in January. So we really haven't experienced the full cost savings of RFID yet.
Sure. And since that is now complete, I was trying to see if we could do something next year. So since that staff will be moving over to passports, have we done any look see to where we might be expecting additional income from passports, or if so, how much?
That's, that's a very good question, and I can't give you a figure right now, but it is hoped that that will increase. And also productivity has increased, because we don't have to check in and check out the books with this barcode scanner.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
I don't have any question there.
Thank you. Councilmember Tal?
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet that you provided us, it just occurred to me that I cannot find the revenues generated by the library. Where, they're, they're not in there.
No, I mean, we've been talking about the presentation numbers, you got to show revenue, the expenses.
Oh, okay. So it's, it's not that I'm just blowing the money.
It was not provided.
It was not provided, okay. Does anybody have any idea as to what the revenues are from, at least our passport?
I do know that had passport number, revenues are budgeted at $270,000 this year. We were going to be exceeding that pre-COVID, but as of now, I don't know where we're sitting, but I know we're not going to hit that $270,000 that was budgeted this year.
Yes, and that's fully understandable. And there are other revenue sources through the circulation?
There are not that many revenue drivers for the library. I mean, there's some circulation revenues, such as, I know there's fines, but that's a very small portion. What else are there? I know they're very small revenue.
We have been doing proctoring, but that is being taken out of the budget.
The main driver for the library is really the passport revenue. And if travel picks up, hopefully sooner than later, we should hopefully get back to the levels that we used to be.
And do you also have revenues for the rental of the bathroom? Because that's a library facility, and that should be properly attributed to library and not included in any other department. They're going to pay for the person who's reserving it, then they should get the benefit of the revenue it brings in, in their budget.
And I can get that for you in one split second from the budget book. And in the future, lesson learned, I will provide a revenue schedule for the Council for the budget packet now. For the adoption, you are going to have all the revenues broken out, so you'll be able to see all that before you adopt it on June 26th. On the library side, I am searching it as we speak.
It's my recollection that with the combining of the two departments, we're actually moving all facility maintenance and management to the recreation side in a separate cost center, which is why the rec coordinator is being budgeted partially to the library now. So I know that the cost for that position, because of where she is housed in recreation, because she's going to be working on doing rentals in the library, it's being allocated to library. I would assume that that means that the bathroom revenues are following that position, but I will defer that to the Finance Director.
So it looks like for, at least on the rental, we don't, we really didn't budget anything this year for the bathroom, being that it looks like historically, historically we were nearing $7,000 and, oh, this year, my apologies, we didn't budget for 1920, we didn't budget anything for this year, but then in prior year, we did budget $7,200, and we brought in about $4,000.
I have the 19 as of March, and I have the rental column at $5,700. So anyway, it's neither here nor there, just as long as it's properly attributed with, along with the appropriate department, it would be helpful to trace facilities as well as passports. And it seemed like, I know that there was a very detailed sheet with, I don't even know how many columns, that used to be done when I was a board member, or liaison, I'm sorry, to the library board, and they were tracking library fees, rental fees, DVD rentals, passport fees, miscellaneous library, and copies and et cetera. So they have, in addition, they had a whole section on restricted donations, which are donations from friends, the other groups for adult materials, Chinese materials, children's materials, as well as a crane art gallery and the wish list. So they had quite a significant, I have over $115,000, and that's in 1919, because I have not been on the board this year. I believe we have two different liaisons. But they're in excess of $100,000 previously to the current COVID situation over this year.
I have no more questions.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Yudi?
For the Finance Director, on the binder we have the proposed, no, the estimated year-end expenses and proposed for next year on pages four and five do not tie. I was just wondering what the delta might be.
You know what page?
Page four and page five. If you look at the proposed on page four, it's a million seven, and proposed on page five, it's a million six. So it's like a $64,000 difference. And it looks like part of it might be the general fund versus the restricted donations funds, but there's still a $4,700 difference.
And I could get you the exact number, why that's off. It should be, the total should be 1.7 million, and that's probably because of the donations. Community services, as we're trying to group them together, we're trying to figure out, do we want to combine some of the other funds into just the general fund, the 101 fund, which we reflect as 101? And I think that's where maybe we, I missed that portion, and it didn't sum up properly. But the true total should be $1.7 million proposed for next year.
Thank you. And then I don't have any questions, but for Council, I do have an observation that I, I went through all the schedules for the library budgets and saw a lot of round numbers and placeholders, or my opinion was round numbers and placeholders, which sends a signal to me that it was a very relaxed budgeting process. And that I, for one, would like to see, you know, maybe a little squeeze put on the library just to come back to see that if we did ask them to reduce the budget by $50,000, what would that waterfall look like in terms of priorities?
I did find in my notes from attending meetings that last year, I just want, and I'm happy to share you with this, with you, Director Chung or whomever, the, I have the final year-end of their budget monitor. They have a very extensive, as I think I said, 30-line, and we could share it with Council members before we go too deep in asking them to cut their budget. Because I have them, total revenues for year-end, December 31st, 2019, is bringing in $230,816. And that's both restricted donations, as well as 187 in these library fees, rental fees, and passports. So it's quite a significant sum. They track everything, and I think if you were familiar, they have a page of donation monitoring, they have a comparison of expenditures and revenues, which we have, as well as they trace all their capital improvements, as well as every single expense throughout the year. There's a monthly report that breaks down both staff time, expenses, supplies, and they have operating metrics. So I think the library does an outstanding job, they always have, in listing and following their service to the community, as well as their expenses. And I think last year, them being recognized as an outstanding library in the entire country is pretty remarkable. And when I look down, I believe it's page five, which is the breakdown of the library bysection, even with getting extra people to the tune of 150,000 added into their line item for booking the rooms that they already handle, which we can discuss separately, they have come down in all the categories except for personnel. So I am impressed by the library, and I'm looking at their summary as being something that other departments should try for. And thank you for that. Irene, I really appreciate, Ms. Niderman?
Thanks, ma'am.
I really appreciate it. Do we have any questions from the public or comments at this time? I don't see anybody here, but I don't know if anybody wants to make a comment here, or we'll give them a little bit of time for raising hands online.
We do not have any comments regarding the library that were emailed, and we do not have anyone asking to participate on Zoom either at this time.
All right, thank you. Then I'll give another couple seconds for people online. Okay, so I think they may, it just takes a couple beats, so let's just take a minute, and then, then we can go to some more committee, or Councilmember comments.
It's on an item that will be discussed later on in today's presentation.
Thank you. Not regarding libraries specifically?
It's not regarding the library.
And have we checked the email as well to see if anybody has emailed us comments? I know that's a separate screen in front of you guys. You have the control center over there with three screens.
At this time, we have no comments on the library. Thank you.
All right, then I'll bring it back to Council at this time for discussion. Councilmember Jacobowski, would you like to lead?
Thank you, Mayor. I truly appreciate the figures that you were sharing with us, and it would have been helpful to have that in front of us as we were preparing for this meeting. I hear both you and Vice Mayor in what you are saying about the library. And I had sent in, in advance, a few of my questions, and I would have liked to have received more specific information, use, budgeting, projections. I'm not feeling totally comfortable at this point. I appreciate the storywalk guideposts, for example, but I really would have liked one of our bodies to have blessed that, if you will, one of our oversight bodies to have given input on that. I'm just not feeling comfortable with what I have received at this point to make an informed vote. So I'll leave it at that at this point.
Councilmember Wong?
Just want to thank you for what you have done for the library, and just keep it up. And I look forward to the passports and this opening up soon. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
Thank you. I too appreciate all the hard work that went into it, and I would like in the future to see the revenues associated with the library. I know it's typically not a revenue generating part of the city, however we have made it one as a result of the passports, and so let's, let's get that information out there. Secondly, I do in fact recall a discussion, and I can't remember now if it was part of a recreation meeting or a City Council meeting, where they did in fact discuss new ideas on the, on that storyboard work. It was here. Okay, so I haven't totally lost my mind. But I do appreciate the work that's gone into, and I, I realize that for all departments, this has been a difficult six months, and so budgeting can be even more difficult as a result, but I do appreciate all the hard work they went in. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Agree with Mr. Tal that in all schedules, we need to see revenue expenses and the net impact. I think, I too think the library does a really good job, but I think, you know, in looking at the details of the budget, it's a fairly relaxed budget. And I still would like to see that, I'm not saying cut $50,000, but I would love to see what the waterfall looks like in terms of priorities. If the mandate were to reduce the expenses, what would be, where would the belt tightening occur? And would that have, what type of impact would that have on, on the community?
Thank you. And I also commend the library and the library staff. I know that it's a challenging year, especially right now, and we don't know what the next will bring, but I think you do an outstanding job, both in terms of managing and as well as serving the community. I'm always pleased when you, your numbers look good and circulation is great and up, and people are using it and also using it for programs. I think it's a wonderful community resource still and being managed very well. And I appreciate also, I would like to shout out to the Board of Trustees, as well as the Library Foundation, the friends. I mean, the amount of work that goes in and the amount of community support for this is incredible. And I know it's a benefit to staff, it's a benefit for all of us that we have so many community participants supporting and involved. You had a wonderful event, so thank you that last fall, or the foundation did. So I really applaud the library for everything that you're doing, and I appreciate it. I know it's hard, and, and you keep track of so many things, and so hopefully they'll get into our final report in a better way than they did this year. But I know that you have the information, because I have it right in front of me. So I don't know where it got lost. So I don't know where it got lost in the translation, and hopefully that will help other council members fully understand when we can work in their end-of-year budget because it's all here. And I really appreciate it. And to, it would be nice to track the revenues that you're managing to generate, as well as the donations that come in that are unrestricted. So thank you so much for that. And I don't know if we have a motion at this time about the, do you want to do a separate? You don't, you don't need a motion? We just need direction from you. If there's anything that you would like us to change or give us direction to do differently when we come back to you at June 26th, this would, this would be the moment for that. Okay, it's just that do I have a motion? So is that the end of all of that? Maybe it's just a standard. It's just a standard. I asked for a motion, so.
Quick question for the Finance Director. How difficult do you think it would be to put together a schedule of waterfall for the, for the library?
When you mention waterfall, do you mean propose $50,000?
Yeah, I'm just, just, you know, if, if a mandate were to reduce the expenses, where would the library look to trend?
I'm not sure there's direction of the majority of council to reduce the expenses. So if you want to do that for every department, then I think we should discuss that as a whole.
And I'm not saying reduce the expenses. What I was asking is it would be interesting to see a schedule of if there were to be a reduction, where would that occur?
Do we have a majority of council? Councilmember Jacobowski, would you like to see a reduction or a waterfall, whatever nice name we want to parse it as?
I, I should pause by saying, of course, I appreciate the library and all its work. I'm probably, if we were to have had a vote, I would have abstained just on my discomfort with the amount of information I would have needed. So in this request, I think I'll just sort of not, a comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, I'll be interested to hear it out and see what director has to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Taub?
I, I agree that there's no direction from the city council, however, I think this is just merely an informational request, and we shouldn't do, we should go ahead and hear what his thoughts are.
At that.
So I, I would go ahead with answering the question. It's merely an informational question. It's not seeking any direction from the city council.
All right. And Vice Mayor Yudi? So he's going to come back at a later?
Well, let me, because I have two weeks or a little less than two weeks to package everything together for the 26th meeting. Even though the meeting's on the 26th, I really have to get everything together and review it with the city manager most likely in a week. That doesn't give you much avenue of time, to be honest with you, council member.
I, I would expect the, you know, the, the department head and the analyst to be able to do that fairly quickly.
And if, I could work with them, but I, I just wanted to give you, I just wanted to let you know that on my end, because I want to feel comfortable presenting what the numbers at the library produces regards to any kind of changes, potential proposed changes, that just has a ripple effect to the overall budget that I'm producing for the council, the 26th. So that's my hesitance, that I am gonna be really working hard to get the package together. That would be my focus.
Okay. I mean, they, then that would not be a big number, so I can withdraw that request, but after we get through the budgeting process, I would like to see that because again, my instincts are that the budgeting process in the library is terribly relaxed, and they've never really put a microscope on anything. So I would like, you know, we go through the budget process, but then, you know, within the next couple of months, then let's, let's dig deeper because again, I saw, it's not a big number, but it was like $800 for mileage, $800 mileage is 1,200 miles. So there's a library drive, the library staff drive 1,200 miles a year, and I say, no, it's probably just a copy paste from prior years. And when I see copy paste and round numbers, it's just, you know, all my instincts say it's, it's just not being analyzed deeply.
And the mileage question did come up, and I, just to add, to answer that, it's not only the trips back and forth to City Hall and various meetings, but also seminars and conferences that you do drive locally to get there. So that is a culmination of that, but I understand your view that it's a very rounded budget number, so after the budget gets adopted, there'll be ample time for me to work with the department and get you a more fine-tuned what you're looking for. I could work with them on that.
I'm comfortable with that. Can I ask a question?
Can I make a comment or ask a question?
Well, it's, it, I just want, I would just like to hear because you're, as the mayor, you'll have the opportunity for the, the last question. So if I, we do, and perhaps this is directed also at the liaisons, there are various advisory boards and trustees that look at this budget, because I remember last year, they were fearful that they didn't have an opportunity. So there is some review by aspects of the community and those responsible for overseeing the library before this budget gets sent to us.
So I was actually gonna, I had this noted to make this comment later after hearing some of Councilmember Jacobowski's comments as well. And our normal process would include review by multiple commissions. So the library board of trustees, the recreation commission would review the recreation budget, public safety commission typically reviews everything related to public safety, not the least of which is the CIP. Unfortunately, this year, as a result of the timing of COVID-19 and the shutdown of everything, the timing worked out that no commission met at a time when they could have reviewed any of these budgets. So this speaks to what we're speaking about here about the library. This relates to the rec commission not being able to review Storywalk. All of those things, COVID didn't enable us to do this year. So I don't want to say that we're flying blind because we're all professionals and we've made good professional recommendations to you, but we were not able to get the kind of community involvement that we typically do in a normal year.
Fine, thank you.
And councilman, as the liaison, that would have been a huge help to me to have been part of that process, and I, I know that we would have had really good weigh-in from the members of those bodies, and I understand what COVID does. So thank you.
And they would be chomping at the bit eventually once we're able to meet and take a look at this. Okay, thank you.
And we do have the year-end, as I said before, so I'm happy to share this with any council members. It's been done as of December 2019. So I think that's what we can look at too, to see what's happening. Regarding the mileage or areas to save, I think that's interesting because there's a lot of people and the library has conferences, obviously, that work there, and other departments, like rec department has 812 miles of mileage. I have no idea why, and they usually have like 300. So I would ask that we look at all the mileage for all the departments instead of calling out one individual. If this is an issue, there's round numbers in HR with two people has 1,500 miles, and planning and building is 1,400 miles. So if you want to do that, then we should do it across the board and examine some of these expenses that are round numbers that don't seem based on usage. I'm happy to do that. But to focus on library, which I think is extremely well managed with the help of a board that does extremely detailed monthly financial reports and analytics of everything, from how many books are checked out to how many people walk in that door and how many people tap in online, I just think is inappropriate. So I'm happy to say that we'll do it for all of them, and you could have a windfall throughout after the budget process is done. That would be my concern.
So I would sum up generally that you are not at the moment directing any changes to the library budget, but once the new fiscal year begins, the Finance Director will sit down with staff and probably the advisory commissions and try to see what it would look like if we were to look at reductions. Is that correct?
It's not for me.
Well, I think it is, to the extent that we do it across the board, absolutely. I think we should always continue to look at ways to improve our, our budget. So in this instance, if I may recommend, and, and I don't know if the mayor, it would be agreeable, but given that due to the coronavirus, the oversight boards did not have an opportunity to take a look at this and study it, before it came to us, I would suggest, I would recommend that they be given an opportunity to go over this, because they, they do take the, the library very seriously, obviously. And so once it opens up, have them take a look at that, and look at it, and they come back with recommendations one way or the other. I'd love to hear it. It's what they do.
That's great. And public safety commission will do that for police and fire? Is that what you're recommending? I'm just trying to get an idea of why this is the one that we're continuing to focus on. If you'd like to see all the, if there are concerns, then we should hold off on our budget and let the commissions that are involved with the various departments go over and make recommendations that are specific to the departments that they work with.
Mayor, may I ask, is it a possibility, taking your last statement, to see how long it would take to facilitate with those bodies to have a Zoom meeting? I think their input is really important, each one of them, and they, and I agree, they all take their positions seriously. I'd really like to see if we could explore that before we finally approve.
Mayor, from a procedural standpoint, if we are going to convene the bodies to review the budget, if you think about how much time and how many meetings it has taken you all to work through the budget as well, we will not make a June 26th adoption.
I would, I would withdraw my, my request, all right? Because it's, it's causing more trouble than, than it's worth. But again, my instincts are, you know, the budgeting process could be tighter, so let's just keep that in the back of your mind as we go through the year, when we do our monthly analysis, just to keep, keep looking. And I think that's across, across the board. The reason it popped out to me at the library is I don't think the library's ever been under the microscope, and I, when I went through the detail, I saw a lot of just round numbers. It says to me, that's a relaxed process, where some of the others, they're very tight numbers, that says to me, it's a crispered process.
Right, and I said, sitting on the board for library for two and a half years, that they actually are very specific and have greater detail than any other department. And I have physical evidence, even if you don't believe me personally.
I, I believe you. And, and the reason we're talking about the, the library as opposed to the public safety commissions is because we're talking about the library right now. And I recall last year, or perhaps it was the year before, the library oversight boards didn't have an opportunity to take a look at the budget before it was presented, they were upset. So I'm really suggesting that when they're capable of, of getting back together, I think they would look forward to the opportunity to review the budget and make any, make any recommendations at that time. It's giving them an opportunity, not forcing them to do anything if they choose to.
If it's helpful, I imagine that once the bodies start and the budgets are adopted, that all of the bodies that normally look at the budgets, the public safety commission, the library board, and the recreation commission, will get a presentation on the adopted budget, particularly because they weren't able to be involved this year. That would be after the budget is adopted, but certainly this information will be passed to them. Excuse me. And obviously, barring some unforeseen emergency, would certainly be involved next year. The liaisons to any of those commissions or library, or however you choose, could be involved in, in making sure that those bodies look at the budget process in a way that is deemed. So, hearing, nothing further. I will assume that that-
Well, let's give Councilmember Wong a moment to weigh in.
No, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
All right, so the balance is not tipped, so we'll proceed with the budget as it's presented, and then follow up with the commissions and boards that work with the departments to then review when this becomes. And next year, we'll have a firmer, or perhaps if things can be found and cost savings are available, in any departments, we will be informed of them then in the fall, or whenever it's possible, not knowing how this COVID will allow the groups to meet, but that would be helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to next begin? Oh, I, do you have any online? No, we don't. All right. Rec department.
Thank you for that library discussion. We will now move over to the recreation division. However, before I do that, I, I have made two notes to myself of, of just some comments that I wanted to make. One was the one that I previously mentioned about, unfortunately, the commissions were not able to participate the way that we prefer them to due to the COVID-19 cancellations. The, the other one that I wanted to mention is the issue of revenue has come up several times today, and as the Finance Director indicated, less than large, we will have that for next year. Just as a reminder, we have been improving our process every year. I think that this process this year is even an improvement over last year. Last year, at this stage of the game, instead of getting the actual, I'm just gonna refer to them as rough drafts of the department expenditure budgets, you didn't see these line items or these cost centers at all. You saw a chart that just summarized the major changes. This year, we thought that it would be preferable to actually give you that data. So we took that step forward in actually giving you the budget documents ahead of time for these, these meetings. In other cities, this is generally called a study session for the budget. And then next year, the clear improvement will be to also give you revenues. So we appreciate the feedback, and we'll definitely incorporate that into next year's process. So diving into recreation, obviously, this one is much more complicated, and we, we were hopeful that library would be the easy one to get out of the way before we delve into the recreation budget. There are many things about the recreation budget that make this a complicated budget to present to you. But first, just a bit of a recap. The budget that's in front of you for recreation represents phase one of the re-envisioning, which was presented to you and you discussed on April 24th. I, I left that staff report for you on the, on the table, just in case it was helpful to have that in front of you again as a refresher. But in that document, it walked through all of the program changes that were expected for all three phases, but it specifically outlined the programs that would be shifted for phase one. The summary document starts on page 3-10 of that report that you have in front of you if you want to refresh your memory. That report also provided additional detail about all of those programs, including specific cost breakdown per program per phase, and also projected participation numbers per program per phase. And if you're interested in drilling into that level of detail, that starts on page 3-17 of that report. For those of you with us at, at home, this is from the staff report that I'm referring to from April 24th, which is of course available on our website if, if our viewing members at home would like to refresh their memories as well. So all of the program information, all of that detailed information was part of what you looked at and suggested that we move forward with on April 24th. And so what you see today is the budget document derived from all of that information. Our recreation staff, our Fire Department Director and I have that document as well, so if there are specific questions about that, we also be able to refer to that document to, to help. So this is a challenging budget to prepare. The presentation on April 24th was challenging as well. These are obviously projections. These are not, in some cases, programs that we're currently running, and so there's no past data necessarily to use, and the way that we're doing it is slightly different in the future. But based on all of our combined professional expertise and judgment, we've made these recommendations to you. We were led, of course, by our interim community services director, Justine Espinosa, who has a wealth of experience in this area, as I think you heard when she spoke on April 24th. So we appreciate being guided by her expertise and her experience and her wisdom. As we move into the year, if it turns out that these numbers are not correct, we may be able to make changes. We'll be able to collect data and gather information as we go. But at this point, unlike really any of the other budgets, that there was a lot of professional projection that needed to go into this as opposed to actual data to use. The final caveat that I want to offer is, we did receive several questions about where is the COVID-19 impact? Where do we see things being canceled as a result of COVID-19? How do we think that that's going to play in? And the answer that we've given to each of you who asked is, we did not include COVID-19 impacts into this budget. And there are two major reasons why we elected not to do that. The first is philosophically, we all felt strongly that you needed to see what the true cost of phase one would be, even if there had been no COVID-19. So as we move into this re-envisioning, as we gather data and we move forward to be able to determine whether this is successful, not successful, where we need to tweak, what we need to change, you need to have a full budget in front of you in, you know, quote-unquote "normal circumstances." The second reason is far more practical, which is that the COVID-19 impacts are, are really completely unknown at this point. If you had asked me three weeks ago if on June 5th, I would have thought we would have been as open in terms of retail and business and the community as we are today, I would have said no. So things are moving in some ways much quicker than we imagined that they would a month ago, and by the time this budget goes into effect in a little less than a month, things will likely change dramatically again. It's possible, for example, that we will be able to begin some recreation programming in July, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, and certainly there are some cities that are already targeting doing that. In fact, there are some communities that are already starting to open up their recreation programs. So we didn't want to make a guess about what might happen with COVID-19. There's really no professional expertise to bear on COVID-19 because nobody has ever dealt with this before. So from a practical perspective, it seemed foolish to us to offer you suggestions on what the impacts might be when things are changing so rapidly and it really is a significant unknown. We do need to have a budget available in case recreation programs are available to open, and if it turns out that they're not available to open, then obviously those would be costs that we would not expend and potentially revenue that we would not generate. Finally, Finance Director Chung sent out a few additional documents to you earlier this week, and they are hard copies- this week, and there are hard copies, uh, left for you on the, I keep wanting to say the dais. I guess I'll just say the dais. Assume that that's what we're doing. Um, and so just to recap, what you have in those three documents are, uh, first, a somewhat detailed breakdown of revenue for the different recreation program areas. So, um, we did manage to solve the revenue issue that several of you have mentioned for Recreation, because we knew that that would be of interest for you. So you do have an opportunity to see the proposed revenues for Recreation by program area. You also have in front of you something at the top that says fiscal year 2021 proposed revenues, Recreation. This is actually a net cost document, so it's a high-level summary of each program area, the projected revenues, the projected expenditures, and then the net cost of what those programs would run. And then finally, you have a, a longer document. It's a couple of pages, and it's titled Recreation Summary by Sub-Account. And this was something, um, I, I hope that you find it helpful. If not, uh, you should blame me for that. I asked Finance Director Chung to put this together. Um, this, this pulls together all of the costs for a subject area across the program areas. So for example, um, just the top line is contracted teacher services. Different program areas have this line item, and it seemed to me that it might be helpful for you to be able to see a history of the overall costs, because some of these costs are moving around as we re-envision Recreation, and it's difficult to track. Why did this one go up? Why did this one go down? And if the money just moved, we wanted you to be able to see the overall trends. So this is a combination of, um, contracted teacher services, for example, combined through the whole department, regardless of program area. Uh, if you, if you find it helpful, you can commend Paul for spending all of the time putting this document together. But again, if you do not, I apologize, and the blame is solely mine. Um, and so with that, I am happy to turn it over to the Finance Director.
Great, thank you. Can I get that slide? As the City Manager mentioned, this is, uh, the Recreation budget has been challenging. Um, we, I had to work with the department to piece together what was a two-year status quo budget for Recreation, um, together, so that it can be somewhat portrayed seamlessly into next year. There was COVID, um, impact, and also during the, the re-envisioning for next year, you're going from 11 divisions down to six divisions. So it was quite a bit of work to get this together. Um, but overall, I wanted to get you a context of the big picture on Recreation. So the slide that I have in front of you is really the supplemental that the City Manager was referencing that I, that he emailed to the Council on Monday. And so on a high level, on the revenues for next year, that's proposed is $1.5 million. On the expenditures, you're looking at $1.9 million. So the net, or the general fund subsidy for subsidizing the, the Recreation program for next year is $367,000. I wanted to caveat with that with what we're budgeted this year. In 1920, we budgeted in revenues, 1.4, close to 1.5 million dollars. In expenditures, it was close to $2 million. So when you take the net difference for this year, you're looking at $563,000. So when you look at it over this year versus next year, Recreation is proposed to decrease overall by about $200,000 or 35%. So you are seeing a decrease in the overall subsidy from the general fund for the Recreation program that's proposed to you for next year. I just want to express that to the Council. Um, going into the actual Recreation budget that's proposed for next year, the overall budget is actually decreasing. It's decreasing by $83,000, or a decrease of 4.2%. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there's been some reallocation of personnel to, from the Recreation to Library. So you see that reflected there on the personnel side. On the services supplies, um, overall, it's increasing, and the main driver is the $26,000 for the aquatics program that's proposed to be contracted out. Um, from what I've understood, that the personnel, actually, the, the third-party contractor would hire the personnel that the city would have had, so hopefully, they're not losing any job here, they're just going to be working for a different entity. And then also a $10,000 increase in really just contract classes that are mirrored towards what the City Council and the community has expressed that they want to see for next year. So that's really what is the increase. But overall, as I mentioned, it's a net decrease for next year that's proposed. And that really concludes my, um, overall presentation for the Recreation side, and staff is available for questions from the Council.
Councilmember Wong, did you have any questions for staff or Director Chung?
Yes, I do. For the adult program, why do we have such a big deficit, you know, between the revenues and expenditure?
What page are you on, Councilman? You're on the bullet? You're on that paragraph?
Yeah, Phase One. The adult program is $27,966 for revenue, and expenditure is $146,000. I mean, you know, for the youth program.
Are, are you in the, are you in the adult? I want to make sure I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that for the youth program, you know, there is a positive revenue, but for the adult program, it is, there's a deficit of $118,000.
The adult programs are typically, um, and, and that's typically worked together with our active adults, which, um, you know, is seniors. Those programs typically are not moneymakers, the, um, revenue generators. Typically, money is generated through the youth programs. Um, and so occasionally, we are able to make more revenue from adult programs, but that's not, that's not a common thing. Um, we make money through the, like the bridge, which is adults. We, there's money generated through some of the trips, because those are, um, uh, it's a pay-to-play, basically. So some of them we do, contract classes we do, but typically, adult programs are not going to be money generating.
Can you give me an example, like, you know, which program that, you know, can generate money?
The bridge, here. Um, they actually do the trips, um, the trips that we do, the senior trips, those actually do make money. The yoga classes that we do, we typically have 70 people in our yoga classes, they all pay for that class.
Seven-zero?
Seventy, seven-zero. Wow.
Sorry, Councilwoman, were you asking for examples of programs that cannot-
That cannot.
Oh, cannot?
I thought you said can. I'm so sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, some of the programs, like, um, the active adult program that we're doing at the bathroom for, for the seniors, um, that, that one doesn't make money. They enjoy the program. Some of the technology, we're very interested in providing more and more programs for them. Those don't typically make money. Um, is that, does that answer your question?
Councilmember, if you turn to page three dash 11 from the staff report on, in April, where you'll find the, the summary for the adult and active adult programs, typically the philosophy is that active adults are often on fixed income, not necessarily in a position to pay for programs. That may or may not be the case in San Marino, but that's generally the philosophy behind why they don't charge. Um, if you're looking for examples, you can see some, uh, along this document, even social enrichment, uh, you can see the detail of what that program involves. We wouldn't typically charge for that. It's giving seniors an opportunity to come together and do community engagement. So there is a cost to us for doing that, although we wouldn't charge an entrance fee.
I mean, what would you, what do you foresee if we raise the fees on these programs?
I think, some of them you'll lose participation, some of them. Um, and, you know, just, just so you know, we're always constantly trying to find out. We're always reevaluating the programs that we offer. We're going to try paint nights. Um, we're going to offer it through the library, which will be no fee, but eventually, we would like to make it a program that we actually charge for. So we're always looking for ways. They love the yoga classes and the exercise classes, so those are ways that we can generate money. So we are going to do more of those drop-in programs, because they do like those. Um, but some of the active seniors or the active adults, um, if you raise the fees or, or create fees, I, I do think you'll lose some of them.
And how's it turn out for those programs that do not generate money?
How does it turn out?
Turn out, yeah, turn out like, um, the participation rate, is it good or bad?
They're very good. Um, there, there's, um, they're very well attended. Very well attended.
Um, and then... For the aquatic programs, it's already contracted out, so why do we still have to spend $26,000 for services and supplies?
Which program is that?
Aquatic.
Um, if we're going to contract it out, we still have to pay for the fee, the contract for the school, we still have to pay that fee. So that's, that's what that is.
I mean, what is it for?
The rental, the rental to the school district. We have to pay for the rental of the pool.
Okay. And then, um, how about the $10,000 increase in robust contracts or classes?
Contract classes?
Yes.
Um, what we've done, I think contract classes are reimbursable. They, they pay-to-play. Um, so we know that we're going to have some new programs, and based on some of the programs that we're proposing through Phase One, we're going to increase some of the offerings for the youth and some of the, um, adults. So we, you have to budget for that expenditure. However, you will also make that money back in revenue.
And if you look at the net cost document that was on your table and emailed out to you earlier this week, you can see that that is one of the few program areas that's actually expected to generate revenue overall. What is, I'm sorry, contract classes?
Contract classes.
Councilman Wong, the aquatics program generates $34,000 in revenue. They have seen $26,000 of expenses.
That's estimated.
Alright, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was just making a note to myself. Um, I remain excited about the newness of what we hope to achieve in Recreation. So, um, that has not faded in the least. I love the out-of-the-box thinking and, um, the shift in the population we'd like to serve. Um, I do have a few questions, and one of these is to reconcile, um, two documents, and this is for my brain to put together. So I'd like to refer to page 21 of our agenda, Attachment One, and I will pull, for example, egg hunt contracted services. And I see under 2021, and I know Dr. Marlowe was trying to explain this to me, but I see nothing there, yet when I go over to this really helpful net document, I see a line item, um, for the egg hunt with 3,000 revenue, 8169, and expenditures in a net of negative 5,100. So can you help me to understand why with this document, there isn't something carried over to the proposed on page 21?
I think so.
Good.
Um, if, if you look at that page 21 and look at the egg hunt, and then go right up where you see 52,000?
Yes.
It's there. We, we lump all of the events into one. We lump them all, all into one.
Yep.
And so there will be an egg hunt. And, and the other thing is, um, by, by moving it all into contract, the other contract services, the, um, the egg hunt is there, um, Memorial Day is there, the track meet is there, we lump them all together.
Well, actually, the Memorial Day and the track meet, if you look at page 18, are in the budget under Rec Administration.
Actually, that's only a portion of it, and that's under the restricted funds. And so we put all the restricted funds in, in Admin before it had been spread out throughout the entire doc, throughout the entire budget. And what we did is we took all of that, and those are like donations, when we receive donations, that, that's where it goes in the restricted funds. But we also budgeted a small amount in, in this 52,000 for all of those events.
So what was the thought process of doing that? So now we have it detailed out under Admin, and yet the costs are also-
That's only the restricted funds. That's just, we put those in, the restricted funds in the Admin, which is-
Why?
Because before, they were spread out across, um, 11 different divisions, and that was challenging to manage, because it was all these different places. By putting them all in one, there, then you can access, you can track them, there's better oversight, because it's all in one document, or one division.
It's- It's not in one division, it's at least in two divisions.
Yeah, so-
It's in Admin and that particular, but all the restricted funds are in Admin.
So the, when, uh, we're referring to restricted funds, you're talking about the donations fund. So the donations portion is in the Admin division, and then the general fund portion is in the, the community event section. Why did we do that? Uh, in retrospect, I guess, it would have made sense to lump it all into, uh, community events, in, in retrospect, but the reason for that really was because they're restricted or in the donation fund, we felt that the Admin division would maybe be tracking that closely, and maybe that, and that was probably the rationale behind it. There really isn't rhyme and reason regards to why it's in two different divisions, because if you look at holistically, as a department, um, it's still in two different funds. If that makes sense? Does that answer your question?
I know, we've kind of got away from Councilmember Jacobowski's question. Just to sum, just to sum up, there's no magic to which place it goes, but we know that you're particularly interested in the community support level that we have for most of our programs, so this just enables us to track it better in one place.
May I ask a question? Um, that, that explanation was helpful, but I've noticed in general through the budget process, the other contract services can make some of us crazy, because those numbers, for example, 52,000. Um, in getting the final budget, and I guess this might go back to Director Chung, would it be possible to simply break that out for, uh, into the areas for each, rather than having the, the line there slashed through it?
It's, it's really, having more multiple counts doesn't really affect us in a sense. I think the rationale behind that is because they are truly contract services, so we do lump it into this one line item. I understand the visibility into that line item gets difficult, meaning that, um, a lot of the work that's contracted out just resides in there, and the Council can't really see what that details.
And that's exactly where I'm going. I don't feel like we just provide you with a schedule for each-
Yeah, we could just provide you a schedule. That's exactly where I was going with regards. Instead of having separate line items, because then you would have to budget each line item again, and that's kind of going back to the way it used to be in 19, the way it's currently structured. So we were trying to see if we could alleviate that by just lumping it in one, but we can provide a schedule in the future.
Yes, I think schedules would be helpful, just so that we could look at a specific event and see where we're at, um, with the optics of it, so-
And when you say schedule, I mean, my guess is, my assumption is that it's the contract services schedule.
Yes.
You would want, of course, to see the schedule for subsequent-
Thank you. Uh, I think at the moment that does it. I may have more later.
Councilmember Wong?
Thank you, Mayor. What, could, could you define what a family life program is?
I guess we could go back to the other language. Uh, that's pre, that's basically preschool.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because I noticed that the, the anticipated revenues are obviously going to drop substantially next year, and, and I, I do see that there's a lot of estimates, it's the numbers in here that, um, are, it's really hard to do, because you don't know how quickly people are going to get back into some of this, some of these programs after COVID-19, although it, it may happen very quickly, it may be, we just don't know. So I, I do appreciate the conservative approach, um, but the question I have, and it's going to take just a little bit of an explanation. We went away from a, or we're, the Blue Ribbon Committee's suggestion was to go away from a percentage of revenue, or a percentage of expense recovery. Uh, for example, in, in 2019, 20, it was, it, it was 20, pardon me, in, in, uh, in our last budget, it was anticipated to be a 75% recovery, revenue recovery, anticipated because the world fell apart with COVID-19. This budget uses, has an 80% recovery. However, that's not the, the standard that we use anymore. The suggestion was to go for how much of the treasury of San Marino do we want to commit towards Recreation? And I forget whether it was one and a half or 2%.
One and a half.
One and a half percent. Well, it was, I think the final decision was one and a half percent, and that was based upon, but what is the percentage of, of our treasury that we will spend on Recreation, assuming a $367,000 loss?
That seems like a Finance Director question.
Well, it's a question.
I know. Um, so, so the question is essentially-
If anybody could answer it, I love it.
I'm going to guess one and a half percent.
Is it one and a half? Is it 1.5%?
My recollection is that the Blue Ribbon Committee recommendation was 1%, and I remember we had calculated that at the time, something like $285,000. So, if my memory is correct, and if my numbers are correct, then 367 should be somewhere around there, and I'm almost stalling just to give Paul a chance to calculate this number.
But that should not include the revenues generated from recreation, so you take the revenues, subtract out recreation and action, it was just a property tax.
It was just of the general fund revenue.
Okay.
So, let me make sure I calculate this correctly.
So what percent?
What percent?
Of the general fund projected revenue is 367, 250.
Total revenue?
Yeah, total revenue.
For general fund, it would be $30 million if we round it up, $30 million.
So let's take out, so this is 1.2%?
Yeah.
But that, oh, okay. Okay, so we're moving in the right direction, and I appreciate it. And, but I've taken a look at some of the proposed revenues, and they are very conservative. There's obviously places that will learn this here during Phase One, where we can increase revenues and/or decrease expenses or both. So I look forward to it, and I do appreciate the work that you went through, but we've still got a long way to go, and some of that long way is going to be based upon experience. And so, I appreciate that a lot of these things can't be decided. There's some guesswork involved. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No, thank you for the work, because I can appreciate this is going to be a learning year, and you were going to pivot a lot, so I appreciate and accept the ambiguity and some of the programming and some of the numbers, because again, we're going to, we're going to learn as we go. For future presentations, though, I do think schedules would be very useful, have a schedule showing, you know, so that we can all see what the net impact is by each of these six divisions, prior year versus this year would be very helpful, because to see that, you know, the net impact was a negative 5, or projected to be a negative 560 this year, and to improve that by 35% to the negative 370 next year, I mean, that's moving in the right direction. Thank you.
I had some issues with the breakout. A part of it was what Councilmember Jacobowski brought up, the dropping of the specifics, but putting it all under other contract services, and then some under the admin as expenses, particularly, I guess, the biggest line item, just looking at this, that didn't make sense other than the fact that we still have these costs floating in admin as donations. Really had to do with that bus transportation as well, that we've now moved that into the admin, and we've taken it out of the cost for the rec, I guess would be youth programming. I assume that the $119,143 has to do with the bus transportation for the youth programming, the after-school and preschool and daycare kind of bus.
It used to be spread out, but now we lumped it all into admin.
And it's prop A.
It's prop A, transit.
And it's reimbursable.
So, I understand that, but other ones from, is the entire amount really the youth? I mean, there was very little spent, I'm looking through this, other bus in other departments. It's mostly in the youth. When you say spread out, I have like $3,000 that used to be, or $2,000 in one other category, but basically, it's the youth programming. So that, in my mind, just messes up or makes it hard to find out whether youth, if the bus contract was put back in, for example, their expenditures would now be 682. So the numbers change quite a bit if you have $120,000 that you put where it used to be. So it's hard for me to think that this is an improvement by putting everything in a new category of admin, if we're not attributing them to the program that gets it. We might as well just go back to having one rec department budget, and then have schedules for these and...
The rationale was that the, sorry, I was talking so wrong. The rationale was really because admin is the one who's going to administer the reimbursement process, and so that's why we put it there. That was really why we, instead of spreading it out to youth, we just put it into admin, just tracking, tracking purposes.
Is this the school district reimbursement money also, or is that sitting somewhere else? The $110 that we typically give to the school district, that's prop A money?
Should be, well, this should be all just a transit fund, so I have to answer.
No, we discussed that, that was in a budget.
Was that a non-departmental?
I believe so.
Yeah, 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 no, strictly, they can't, I mean, it's really senior trips.
Oh, I'm sorry, for everybody, I'm on, the expense was added to admin, which is page 18, and it never existed before, along with all those Memorial Day, track meet costs. And it was taken out of page 19, which it had lived before, under bus transportation, which had, so, away from me to compare it, and I think it should be going forward so we understand costs, is more details for the community and for us to understand how costs go up. And there's a specific line, that's bus transportation, that has to do with our youth programming, and this year it's projected to be $119,143, or thereabouts, which is fine. I'm not commenting on that, but it should be appropriately, because it's hard to figure out, in my mind, and for people to understand what the costs are for these programs. And so then I pulled up the youth programs, page 1, which is 3-17, and page 2, 318, and it talks about all of these youth programs, and I think I just heard that they were moneymakers, but I'm not sure, if you look at each one, we lose money on our family life, which is our preschool and toddler, we lose money on our education enrichment, we make money on our summer camp, which unfortunately isn't happening, our playdates...
That's a new program.
Is a new program, and we're anticipating a positive. We lose money on our after-school teen, story walk is unknown, we lose money on youth commission, we lose money on robust community service program with SMUSD, and we lose money on youth and wellness fair. So I'm not really getting where we're making money on youth programming.
We typically make money in our contract classes for the youth, we also typically make money, not make money, but the after-school program is typically kind of a wash, it's a service, but, and preschool typically does relatively well. Sometimes it brings in more revenue than other years, but it does typically do very well.
So if I go to page 328, it talks about contract classes. And we have a loss projected for contract classes. And the first one, the first category is unknown. I don't know the, so, how are those two boxes different, the one that doesn't have any attribution or estimate, and then the one that's on the bottom that has a negative for contract classes? It's a small negative, it's $350, so, but I'm just trying to figure out, again, I'm not sure, when we say these things to the public and we publish them in a report that says the opposite, we're all basing this new Phase One, which I don't think reflects community at all, their interest in having community and adult, we still have as many youth classes as we ever did, and prices have actually gone up in supplies and personnel. So I'm just trying to figure out how we are justifying that this department continues to grow across the board in all, every expense category. And we're just...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so if we go to, now I'm in the handout, that we got, that summary by sub-account, and again, we have all of these items increasing up, way up, and the personnel up. So we haven't changed anything, and I have a real problem with the cost of rec department continuing to grow, despite the fact that we're envisioning surveyed community members, and the community members wanted an emphasis on community events, and other adult classes, and active adults, shall we say, and move away from other things. And if, I understand that that was a survey, and the direction given, we haven't achieved it, and yet we're going to spend more on our rec department than we ever have in the past.
It's actually a decrease. Last year's budget was $2 million, and this year's budget, part of the proposed, is 1.88 or 1.9, so there's...
Right, because they just moved people over to the library, $150,000, so...
Well, it's community service, but...
But the services and supplies are also decreasing.
Services are down $206,000.
Can I ask a follow-up question? If the bus transportation, the prop A money that we spend $119,000, if that would go from administrated to, to the youth services, it's just a wash, right?
And it's reimbursable.
Right, so it's, it's just, it is not, it shows an increase in expense, but then you change that to a revenue down there, so it ends up being, I mean, that's what's confusing about this, but I appreciate it. So it's just a wash. I mean, it matters where it is so we can look at expenses and costs, but that particular one is a wash.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, so I think it needs to be booked in the appropriate section, to see whether these sections, and if we continue spending the bulk of the money in the youth programming, we need to keep track of that. I don't think it's reflected in the survey, but the majority of council felt otherwise, but I still think it should be here, and it would be nice to have also the revenue sources for these by section, and I hope that that will make this all more transparent in the future, because as you discussed, as we proceed, this is year one of a three-year change, so we will be keeping an eye on the different categories and seeing both how the community likes new programming, and to make it under other contracts and pull things into administration, it's not helping, at least myself, and I get pretty weedy sometimes, dive into the numbers and understand what makes sense for our community to continue funding. And so I think that's important to know, whether overall, big picture, there are changes and expectations, but I would like to see whether, not necessarily a schedule that will then get lost and not part of our budget, I don't know how it's done, so maybe the schedules all go along in our final document, but I think it's helpful, in my mind, to attribute things, and then also, as Vice Mayor Udi said, to have the revenues be appearing under the different things, and then that, have that broken up, as Councilmember Talk said, this is prop A money that then goes. I think that's all extremely helpful to understand for everybody involved on council and the community, as well as for planning purposes for the department, to see what they can do.
Right.
And understand what's a successful programming. But this, I just had problems with how that was, because it changes these numbers, and it makes it a head scratchers, even though the bottom line is a net decrease by one...
Eight, eight, $3,000, I mean, but you are right, the reallocation of personnel.
So $150,000, that is a reallocation of personnel costs all in, that we're kind of moving over to library, so really, you know, we're not changing rec department. And when I look at then the individual ones, and start getting into the weeds, it got more confusing as to what the money was going for.
When we first brainstormed together, trying to see what we, what document that could best present this, we did have a sheet that had a breakout, but it became very cumbersome, and it was difficult to kind of narrate and show the council how we were transitioning, so we eventually scrapped that piece, but it seems like that's kind of maybe what we should have structured together, and so if I'm hearing you correctly, Mayor, that in the future, for the next budget Phase Two cycle, you want to see that comparison, basically, what the youth program, what the revenue is, and what the revenues entail, and of course, the net of the cost of that program. It seems like that document is going to be what you want to see next time.
And I think that would be helpful to understand for all of us, so going forward, when we're looking at programs, program areas, as big as youth is, or adult or seniors, and also the revenues and other donations, et cetera, or funds, we have it all area by area, so to speak, and even, you know, whether we have to decide whether spending X amount of money on the egg hunt, or Memorial Day, or whatever, if we even start talking about what events are really well-attended by the community, and what's the cost per person, you know, all that helps when this document is formed. And I know it's hard, because, and I appreciate the time that it took everybody to even get first this intensive report, and then this, but like I said, I need that to make myself comfortable, because I think that it is a growing budget, and the amount, for me, is more than I expected, and more than I expected that the, would be the result of the community survey, because I thought we were paring down in certain areas and reallocating, and so I just didn't see that here, and that's a disappointment to me.
Mayor, can I ask you a question, just because you keep on mentioning this? I'm looking at the numbers, the library has an increase of .3, .3 employees, and recreation has a decrease of 5.39 employees. What other than, what is it, maybe one full-time position combined being moved over?
I have a sheet about it, because I was curious.
Well, I'm looking at the numbers that are...
Right there. You can have it. Director Chong, and, will you? Director Chong already quoted out, it's right here.
I can run that number for you right now, too.
Yeah, if you want, or do you have the...
It's 1.3 FTE.
So it's 1.3, 70%? Okay.
30% of the director, 50%, actually, they lost, actually, that number won't be right, because 50% of the management analysts went the other way, came out of library, and moved over to recreation, then it's, so it's a plus 30%, minus 50%, plus 10%, plus 35%, plus 0.5%.
So the total of movement is?
$114,236 in salaries, and then when you add in benefits, it's $149,000. And...
Okay.
The library, if my understanding is correct, had already, was down some positions of librarians, part-time and full-time, so that's why their numbers did not change significantly. And as well as rec department, we lost all of, not lost, I'm not, that's not the right lingo, all of the aquatic positions, which were several, if you go to the, now I'm on page 15, which is a summary sheet, if you look at pool manager, assistant pool manager, lifeguard, water safety instructor, cashiers, those have been subsumed within other contract services, because we're going to have an aquatic program that's managed by an outside company instead of us, and we're hoping they'll hire ours, youth, but, so those all disappeared. And then some other positions actually became program leaders moved up to assistant. But anyway, it's a lot more complicated if you spend time on the final columns on page 15.
On page...
15. That's the rec department that has all the personnel positions.
No, right, but isn't it a good idea if that department was losing, if that program was losing money to contract it out? Is rec department to be punished now for contracting out something that was actually showing up on the books as a losing item?
The aquatics program?
The aquatics program...
Specifically, we're talking about?
You just mentioned...
I think the aquatics program is one of the best things in the community, and I remember all those people coming in and asking about it, so now, yes, it was a decision that that's going to be contracted out to somebody else.
When did we have the discussion as to whether it's contracted out?
You have that, April 24th.
April 24th.
Okay, that's what I thought, and the decision was made by the council at that time, that we will contract it out, and, because most of the people, number one, wanted the program, it will still be offered, and number two, wanted to ensure that the youth are offered, and that's still going to happen. So it ends up as a, I hate this expression, win-win. And if we're going to go back and revisit that decision, then I'm more than willing to do that, however, to me, it was a department that was draining a lot of, it was an area that was draining a lot of resources, and yet we could... and yet we could serve the same purposes by contracting it out, and that is to have the pool open and have our youth hired, assuming they honor their commitment, but I believe they will. So I just, I see as savings in this. I see that it's the first year. And who knows, maybe after the first year, we'll decide contracting out is not worth it for us.
Can I direct you to page 329? It's the aquatics program and the re-envisioning.
329.
It's this, it was...
In which?
April 25th? 24th, I'm sorry, 24th, I'm off by day. In the aquatics section, there's both number 29 and number 30. And 29 is the summer months, free rec swim, private swim lessons and other activities. Right, so that brings in $1,680, let's just say.
No, that's participants.
Number of participants, okay, then let's go down below and we'll look at the anticipated fiscal impact. And I see a negative, if I'm, the brackets in normal financial parlance mean a negative of $105,604, and then it will lessen over time. So I appreciate that you, we are trying to improve the rec department. And on one sheet, it says that the aquatics program being contracted out, in theory, would save us money, but everywhere I look, the aquatics program being contracted out actually costs us money. The program already cost us money, and now, since we're contracting out, you could see on this summary sheet, which we just got today, first time I saw it, the aquatics program, the services and supplies is going up by 26,000. So I just think there's a lot of false narrative going on, and I think we need to be really careful when we're talking about this. I think the aquatics program should be supported. One thing I would say that's a community program, but I don't think you're going to be able to use any financial facts that we have before us to say that it's a moneymaker or we're better off contracting it out.
You say false narrative, what do you mean by that?
Well, because here, you just said that it may...
We're going to lose...
Money, and contracting out is a positive financial decision. And this says that it's not, the two documents that I have in front of you.
So losing $100,000 is better than losing just $35,000, and that's a false narrative? I see it, look, the community is making a decision as to how much of its treasury should be spent on something that's positive for the community and doing it in a way that allows our resources to be used as effectively and as financially thoughtful as possible. And the decision to contract that out was because aquatics, before, by the way, aquatics was a moneymaker. That's when we had the swim groups, the tsunamis and so forth involved. And so we had to transition out of that, and we did. And having a good aquatics program is a positive for the city. And it was costing us more money than what it would when we go to a contract. And I'm not talking about making money. If I use the expression "make money," I apologize, but we're losing less money going to a contract. And to me, that's the type of re-envisioning that the Blue Ribbon Committee and the Recreation Committee and the City Council wanted to see done. And I realize that it is still going to, quote-unquote, "lose money," but it is a step in the right direction because we're reducing the overall cost of the program.
Mayor, can I follow up on this issue?
Of course, thanks.
I still need some clarification, so I still understand. So this is being contracted out, but we still have to pay $26,000 for the pool? Is that right?
The program still requires a pool, and the facility is the school district.
To me, I mean, if it's contracted out, you know, everything should be contracted out. I mean, that's how I look at it.
Is that an option for an outsider to contract with the pool?
I didn't propose that question to them, that they would pay the fee, but they would, they're still going to want us to pay that fee. Somehow you have to rent the pool, somehow that's going to happen at some level.
Generally, when you contract out, you provide the pool to the...
What's the revenue for that program?
The revenue, we basically just estimated at this point in time. We're hoping for approximately $30,000, but there's a lot of factors that could come into there, so I don't want you to attach yourself to that.
But we're hoping for revenue of 30 against expenses of 26,000.
Right.
It also, just to refresh your memory and the discussion that we had, it eliminates a workload from the Human Resources Department. We no longer recruiting for all the aquatics personnel, which is a significant time expenditure every year and also hard positions to fill sometimes. And it removes the liability for running that program from us. You would not see either of those numbers in the cost estimates, but those are other factors that drove some of our decision.
Yeah, so we're going to contract out to USA pools, and what's the overhead for them?
What's their overhead?
Yes.
You mean, they bring in all of their, they hire staff, they'll recruit here in the city of San Marino. We will pay them the fee that they request, which I think is 28,000, $26,000. And they will run the program here, and they will hire all the appropriate lifeguards. They will provide the insurance, they'll provide all the equipment for the staff, the swimsuits and all of those things.
So then why do we still have a deficit of $39,000? I mean, or for the phase two and phase three, why are we still losing money? I mean, it should only be $26,000, no?
I'm not exactly sure if we're going to act, I think these were estimates in here. And we've done a little more work since I think you originally received that report. But it's going to cost us $26,000 to $28,000 for the contract, for sure. We still have to rent the pool, and so there's going to be a cost.
Okay, so it's $26,000 included in this estimate of $39,000?
Yes, I believe so.
So what's the other, 13,000?
That's the pool, the rental of the pool.
Not the $26,000?
Remember, what you're seeing in this number is the costs plus the, minus the revenues or probably the reverse. So you have about, the rental is about $26,000?
The rental of the pool is...
The contract is about $26,000, the pool rental is about $13,000, and that's every summer.
13 for the pool, and the other 13 is?
So it's 13,000 for San Marino Unified School District?
Right.
Pool rental, and 26,000 for the outside contractor that's going to be running the program.
So we're going to pay USA pools $26,000 to run the program?
Yes, and they'll be doing the hiring of the lifeguards, and they'll be managing the program completely entirely.
And what, so it was $100,000 before if we had run it ourselves?
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I?
Yes.
I'm sorry, as we're going through these pages, this is really a large project going forward, and I keep looking at the word "re-envisioning." We all want re-envisioning, and I think we are shooting in the dark quite a bit. And if it would comfort us as a council to even review quarterly once we pass the budget, I just don't think everything's going to work the way we want it to, and we may get some new ideas, or we may see something that really is flying and want to double up on it or do another version of it. I think we have to start somewhere, and we are going into a lot of unknown. So that would be one suggestion I have, that we really put that as an agenda item by quarter during the first year. But I also have one other question. On the back of page 330, you've unfortunately listened to me for months on end talking about our registration and reimbursement process when either classes are canceled or folks want their money back. And we are talking about the new active net. Is that indeed in our budget? And if so, can you direct me to where I will find that?
No, it's not included in this budget. The timing at which we had a sense of what that program was was too late to get it included. So if we were to move forward with that, we would be bringing it to you as a completely standalone item and needing to request appropriation for it.
Do we have an approximate cost on it? Because we are spending so much time and money on reimbursements, somebody must have some idea of what that software, great. Can we get a ballpark on that?
Typically, that software is about $40,000 all in, and then there's a yearly charge of between, I think it's 22,000, possibly 24,000 to maintain it every year. We've actually done a little more research over the last three or four months to find other vendors that might have something that's similar that other communities are liking. All the costs that I've been looking at are all very similar to that. So that's kind of the ballpark figure. And you can pick and choose what programs you want to add to it or delete, so you can get the price a little higher, you can get it a little lower. But one of the most important things that we want here is online registration, and that's about the cost when you go to online registration.
And that seems peculiar in that to have a cost benefit to this, one would have to have a really large department.
Yes.
There certainly must be many, many cities like us across the United States where some entrepreneur could make software that could scale down for folk like us.
Yes, and I've been doing more and more research. I've contacted several other cities, some similar-sized cities, to see what they're using. I've made contact with their vendors. So I am working on finding another program, but so far, the costs are kind of in that ballpark.
I would deeply, deeply appreciate that. I have such a huge concern about the banking and staffing and the mailing and, you know, the last century way in which we handle these things. So thank you for the work on that, and if we could get follow-up for sure, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
May I respond to the quarterly check-in suggestion? We could, well, first off, we're going to be launching our recruitments for all of our new commissioners. Many commissioners have their term expired and so forth. Recreation Commission is no exception. Once that commission is staffed and meeting again, this certainly will be before them regularly. You do have two Recreation Commission liaisons, and we certainly would not be opposed at all to having regular quarterly discussions about how the budget is going, what changes might be necessary. And if anything does become relevant to float up to the full council level and require approval, we could certainly bring it.
I'm not concerned with how we get information, but that we get it quarterly. As I said, this is, to use somebody who was around here a long time ago, talked about repairing the plane while it was flying. I think we will be having some of that with year one. And I think for council to keep a close ear to this is crucial, regardless of what the method is. Thank you.
Councilmember Talt, did you have any other comments or questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Thank you.
I don't know if we have had any comments or questions by members of the public, either electronically, by email or by Zoom.
We have not had any comments on the recreation budget, email or Zoom. I'm not seeing any comment. Excuse me, we do have one moment, we'll unmute her. Thank you. Shirley, you can go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I heard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. My name is Shirley Jagels. I'm at 1404 Wilson Avenue, and I've been listening with great interest to the discussions, and I appreciate all the energy. I just jotted down a few notes, some thoughts that I had, which I would like to share with you. I agree that swimming education is important, but I do not believe that that is the responsibility of this council, but rather the parent. Because for one thing, we do not have a community pool. And I've lived in communities where there were community pools. I think this could be a supplemental offering at the school district. I think the council should focus more attention on the abandoned swimming pools full of mosquito larvae. This is an affluent community. They have plenty of, a lot of people have swimming pools. Oftentimes, our residents can pay for private lessons or alternatively, go to one of the many options here, such as the YMCA on our western border, a stone's throw from Stoneman, no pun intended, or learn at summer camps or through scouting programs or the award-winning Pasadena Aquatic Center, which is also a local thing, especially with our enrollments going down. This might be a way for the school district to make some extra money. And those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jagels. Just checking again to see if we had any other hands raised or emailed comments, anything going on by Zoom that you could see or questions, excuse me.
I don't have anything else coming in, Mayor.
Thank you very much for checking. All right, so I guess we need to bring this back to council members for their final assessments, let's say, and discussion points or conclusions. I don't know who I started with, and I apologize. Councilmember Wong, I think I have it starting with you this time.
Mayor, may I just insert quickly? I know that the question section got a little murky with comments also, but I have here that potentially some of the direction that you want to give us during this part of the conversation is to, for final budget adoption, provide you with schedules for other contract services and also to move the Prop A money to follow the programs that they're serving. So that would be the direction that we come out of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other direction or offer something for us, Councilmember Wong?
Yes, so first of all, I want to thank the Rec Department, Recreation Department, for coming up with this budget, and also I want to thank Director Chong for answering my questions earlier this week. But I think that maybe for the future, if we have a better breakdowns of the details, for example, like the aquatic pool, it took us like 30 minutes to figure out, you know, 30-some thousand dollars, 26 is paying out the contract, and 13,000 is for paying the pool. So if we can have that in the future, so it would be easier for us to understand because of, so that way we don't have to spend a lot of time here. And second of all, like Ms. Jagel said, this is a very affluent community, and recreation to me is a luxury. It might be so for the senior programs or the adult programs. I believe that most of them can pay a little bit more to cover the expenses for us so that way we don't have to spend taxpayers' money on some of these luxurious items. I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I appreciate, oh, this is just a huge ball of wax, and it's a lot of work, and I cannot say enough how pleased I am that we're trying to re-envision. This department has been run the way it's been run ever since my middle-aged son was a young child. So it's way, way past due for some re-envisioning. And we're going to do some things wrong. So I'm really pleased that we can get that feedback and see how it goes. I'd like to make one small additional line item request. I'll try to be bringing some sunshine to this. We have, of course, been with COVID for a number of months, and that caused our live Memorial Day event to be canceled with veterans. I thank you for what you are doing for our Fourth of July celebration. It was delightful as a council member to see what's going to be promoted out to the community. But I'm going to try to keep some optimism that by the time we get to Veterans Day, we might be able to do something official for our vets. And the folks that I have spoken to over the years, I know they very much appreciate this event on Memorial Day. I know we have quite a few vets in the community. They love attending. So I would like to propose that we add a line item for a Veterans Day event, staying positive, hopefully, since it would be later in the year. And in an ideal situation, it could be later in the morning on Veterans Day. And to stay with the positivity of the year and hopefully some type of we're-moving-on thought, to offer a barbecue for our vets following that event on that day. If we can block it out and plan for it and have some latitude, we're pretty good now in getting fairly decent advance weather information. And if it looks like that time of November is heading cool, perhaps to move it even into this building. But I would really like for us to add that amount to the programming and something where, of course, our mayor would hopefully be willing to be involved with. And I know Mitch Lehman has done a lot of work in the past, and maybe he would be willing to be part of that, too. Thank you.
If this is supported by your colleagues, are you comfortable essentially replicating the Memorial Day budget for a Veterans Day event? Is that the kind of number you have in mind, or did you have a different number in mind?
Well, it would be nice if we could add the cost of a luncheon, or a barbecue, rather, not a luncheon, just a very informal event. And who knows, there might be some community volunteers, members who might be willing to pick up the cost of that. But if not, I don't see that as being outrageous and costly. So there would be additional cost. Thank you, Dr. Wong.
So just to follow up, what City Manager Marlowe had suggested is a $2,000? Is that the Memorial Day? Because I was just going through quickly.
It looks like if I add everything up, it's about thirty-five hundred is the total for Memorial Day. Is that about right? So it would potentially be thirty-five hundred plus a barbecue. But we could figure out what that exact number is if at least maybe we support that.
No, I was just trying to find you. Because I know you guys know, and I, there is a lot of pages here. As we've just learned, that have costs spread out throughout. So I'm sure there's some Memorial Day costs in the admin. So anyway, thank you for summarizing that. I appreciate it. And so thirty-five is what we typically, and that is without food.
Right.
And you would like to offer a casual barbecue or something?
For the veterans and their mates, and then at a cost for others.
Significant others?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. I was like, their what?
Mates, whatever we want.
Okay. So five thousand is what? I was just trying to get a number that if we needed to add.
I'm comfortable with whatever is brought back to us with a moderate price barbecue.
So if this is supported by a majority of you, we would do some research and bring back an appropriate number and put it in your proposed budget on June 26th. My guess is it's probably a minimum of five thousand if we're including food. But we'll run some numbers and see what it looks like.
Yes, I think that's a great idea, you know. I mean, I mean, for Memorial Day, we remember those people who sacrificed their life. But we should show our appreciation for the ones that are alive that served for our country. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much. Councilmember Tal?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work that everybody's put in, including that of the volunteers on the Blue Ribbon Committee, the members of the Recreation Committee, although things have been a little difficult to get together. And I also realize that this is the first phase, and it's a learning phase. We're heading on a little storyboard walk, trying to figure out what each post is going to look like. And I appreciate the continued hard work. And I look forward to finding further ways to save the Treasury while still supporting our city and those in the recreation. So with the suggestions made about breaking out further, I can support this budget and include the Veterans Day as part of that. However, that is because Veterans Day is not a holiday, like, I think the banks are closed. I don't know. It's going to have to be later in the afternoon if we're going to get the most attendees there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Yudi?
I do appreciate the work and, you know, your command of the numbers. Appreciate that. And I think those schedules will be really helpful and useful. And it's always important to put costs and revenue in the proper program areas so we can track that. And I also would support the recognition of the veterans. But for $5,000, I think you can find it in a $1.9 million proposed budget.
I am also in support of coming up with a veterans event. And I greatly appreciate Councilmember Jacobowski's suggestion. It would be nice to celebrate those. And they tend to be once a year at the Memorial Day. So, but it's really a different occasion and perhaps better for our community to focus on a new program that we can have a community event at Veterans Day. And perhaps later in the day, even if it was late afternoon and it was something casual before dinner. But I lead that to your decision-making. I do have a similar concern, I guess, regarding the Rec Department overall budget. To me, that seems contrary to a re-envisioning and saving money that I was hoping would happen. So I would like to also suggest that we, like library, look at this one perhaps on a more regular basis after budget season has concluded and get some cost savings and see if there can be reductions in here that more reflect. I know this year is Phase One, and we're working to Phase Three over the time. But all along, I thought the general direction of council was to be spending the same amount. And I think it's going up, and I'm concerned about that despite it. So I would like to see a chance at reducing some of the costs that we have in the budget for this item. I still think it's too much. That being said, all right, then my summary of where I think you all are is we will, for the June 26th meeting, provide you with schedules for the other contract services line. We will move the Prop A money to follow the programs that they're allocated to. And we will add a new line item for Veterans Day celebration, to be determined once we do some further research. Does that seem like a correct summary of? And are we doing something? I don't remember what we decided about library in terms of looking at it after the budget process is over.
Yes, I think that's going to happen. That's going to happen anyway as the commissions, just to reassure you all. As the commissions come back into action, each one of those commissions is always interested in reviewing the budgets of their relevant departments. So we expect to have those conversations with every commission that has that kind of oversight role.
And so it would be Rec Commission, too? And then it will come to council after they have whatever meeting in the fall?
Well, it may or may not come to council, any of those. The budget will be adopted at that point, and there'll be conversation. If there are changes that the bodies and staff decides to recommend, we would then certainly bring those forward. And I've heard a clear interest in some increased reporting on what's going on in the finances in both of those departments. So we'll be getting that information regularly.
And not just finances, program. We'd like to hear the success of the new programs or lack thereof and what might be suggested. We respect each of the support bodies, but we would like to have the information shared in a formal setting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a ten-minute break for restroom, et cetera, and to the public. And then we will come back and start the CIP. CIP's in order of what was in the agenda. Getting back to order and begin looking at Director Marlowe.
Thank you.
Or City Manager, I'm sorry. I said Director.
It's okay, I will take either.
Dr. Marlowe, City Manager Marlowe. Would you like to start the next section?
I would be delighted. So we will now turn our attention to finishing off the CIP portion of our budget. We have now concluded all of our operating budget discussions prior to adoption on June 26th. And now we're turning to the completion of our capital improvement plan discussion. So just as a reminder, we had the preliminary discussion, I should say, Part One of the discussion in March about the capital improvement plan. And at that time, which seems like fourteen lifetimes ago, we went through the CIP proposals. Obviously, we were in the very early stages of the COVID-19 pandemic. And there was a little bit of uncertainty about how it might impact us financially and otherwise. So at the direction of the City Council, what we did is we went through all of the proposed items in the CIP, and you gave it either an A, a B, or a C. If a majority of the council has signed it an A, the item has been included into next year's CIP. If a majority of the council gave it a C, the item was removed from next year's CIP and has moved to a further year, potentially to be proposed, as we will see in future years. That left us with a total of seventeen items that the council, a majority of you at least, voted to make a B priority. And the point of the B was not necessarily opposition to the item, not necessarily that it wasn't important, but just that that was an item that could wait until we had a better sense of how COVID-19 was going to unfold. So it is now, again, feels like fourteen lifetimes later. In reality, it is only about two months later. And we are here to resume discussion on those things that we did not get conclusions for at the March meeting. So what we have in front of you today are a total of nineteen items that we will want to go through. There are seventeen priorities that you voted B on. And in your agenda packet, those are noted on page twenty-six. We will go through each of those seventeen items in order with one exception. With the permission of the mayor, we would like to move up the 911 dispatch center renovation to right after the two speed display signs, given the environment. Chief Contra has some other demands on his time this morning. And if we can knock out, I know, I know, no one more important than you, but does have some other issues.
Do you have a schedule of what was approved before? Do we have As so that we can see what those are and the total amount of money? Just to refresh our memory?
I do believe we have a list of As that the Finance Director has, separate from even that document. He can certainly distribute that. So while the Finance Director does that, we will, again, work through all seventeen items on page twenty-six in order, with the exception of the dispatch center, which will move up. And then after we conclude that, there were some questions raised at the last meeting about the tire balancing purchase. The Parks and Public Works Director will discuss that. And then last, but certainly not least, we will finish with the ever-popular computer replacement item. And hopefully, we have some more information for you today that we can go through on that item. So those are the nineteen things that we'll be going through. And we will be beginning with the equipment, the two equipment items that are on page twenty-six. But before we move to that, I'd like to turn it over to the Finance Director for his part of the presentation.
I just have one slide for the City Council this morning. This will provide the City Council an overall cash balance of the CIP fund. Let me just get to it really quick here. Come on, quicker. Okay. Well, okay, it's really small on the screen, but.
We have it here in our.
Yes, I know it's there. I wanted to maybe point out just so that we could flow through. But really, this schedule was updated to just show the City Council what the cash balance looks like for this capital project fund. So if we look at the left column, the first column is the budget for 1920. And so we started the year, we also transferred the five million, I believe now February, I believe so. But we transferred the excess cash to the capital fund per council's direction. And so that increased the capital project fund. And then you also have the approved project expenditures of $4.8 million. And the overall cash balance was anticipated to be $14.2 million. Now going on to the next column is the estimated column, meaning what Director Brown believed that he will be able to accomplish and finish for the capital projects that were budgeted. So if you go to the project expenditures line, you see that we're anticipating to finish $3 million of the anticipated, or the approved $4.8 million of project by June 30th. I wanted to highlight to council that that will, of course, those remaining projects will be re-appropriated or rebudgeted for next year in 2021. And so the anticipated now cash.
Wait, can you just stop?
Yes.
The part that's going to be carrying over?
Yes.
Is it on this detail?
Yes, it is. And.
Where am I?
So if you look at the eight-point-two, eight-point-three million in the yellow column?
Yes.
That number includes the reappropriation number as well. And I'll break that number out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So regards to the estimate, of course, if we're not going to finish these projects that were planned, and it's going to roll into 2021, the capital fund is expected to be about $16 million by the year end. And so now let's move into the yellow column. And so the yellow column, you see that the first line is the interest income as the cash sits in the capital fund, it will earn some interest. And then the real number that the mayor was just talking about was the eight-point-three, or what she was referring to was the eight-point-three million dollars. What that really entails is three things, and I wanted to highlight to the council. It's the reappropriation or rebudget from prior year, and that's $1,760,780. That's really basically, you take the difference between what was budgeted on the left side, $4.8, minus what we're going to spend on the capital. And that's the remaining amount that's going to be re-appropriated to next year.
Would it be helpful to go through those numbers again?
Do you want me to say that?
That's simple, Mayor. Give us some of the one-point-eight and the nine-point-nine on this schedule. There's a five-and-a-half million that's not identified yet.
Yes, yes. So there's one-point-eight that's going to roll into next year. And then the A list that I just passed out, those are the items that were approved by council. That number is $4.5 million. And the reason, if you add up what I passed out versus what the four-point-five I'm mentioning, it would be less. And the reason for that is you have to remember that there's the roadwork, that the service CEO for the roadwork, even though it's budgeted at $3.5 million. Yeah, $3.5 million. One-point-one million of that comes from Measure R and gas tax. So I wanted to take that portion as out of there, because that's not the general fund portion or the CIP fund that's going to pay for that. The other fund, gas tax and Measure R, is going to pay for that portion.
Can you read, name that line item again, which one?
So when you look at, on your sheet that I passed out, if we go to the construction page, the second page, you see that there's a street rehabilitation program for $3.5 million.
Yes, thank you.
Out of that $3.5, one-point-one is paid by gas tax and Measure R funds.
Thank you.
So I've netted that portion out of the total. So that gets you the reappropriation of one-point-eight. A-list items that the City Council has approved, four-point-five. And then the B list that's in front of you that you would be approving, the seventeen items, that comes out to $1.96 million, or close to $2 million. So what I wanted to show the council was, if you were to approve all the B list today, that total amount that we would budget next year is $8.3 million. And then the net cash in the CIP fund will be $8 million.
How much do you anticipate being available to transfer into the capital projects fund from our operating budget?
And that's a great question, councilmember and Vice Mayor. And when I presented to the council last week on Friday, the excess cash for the end of 1920 was anticipated to be $4.2 million.
All right, so that should really be there, $4.2. And what would you anticipate next year's to look like?
Well, before, even on the $4.2, that's the excess cash. Now, you've got to remember that for our fiscal policy, we want to keep forty percent of our overall revenues plus the $1.25 inflator factor. So when you do that, that $4.2 might not be the whole $4.2. I just want to express.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the, to me, this schedule is misleading because it does not have any, you know, any available reserve to transfer into the capital improvements program for next year. Or, no, excuse me, for this year, no, for next year or the year after that. So not having that seven, eight, nine million dollars makes this capital fund look scary to me.
And I understand that perspective. The reason I wanted to not include those amounts, it was really driven by, I wanted to show the City Council, without the excess transfer of cash, what would it really look like? And I wanted to show that picture instead of having that potential excess cash that was coming into the fund until you really need it till 2022, 23. I just wanted to express that, and that's why it wasn't included. But to answer, going back to your question versus the first year, you're looking at $4.2 of that, my guess is maybe roughly about $3 million or approximately $3 million will potentially be transferred into the capital fund. And then for the following year, for the 21, 22, what I presented to the council last week was anticipated to be $3.1 million of excess cash for what the City Council is going to, if we were to adopt the budget for 2021, of that $3.1 million cash, I would take out maybe a million dollars. So close to about $2.1 would be in 21, 22, will be transferred into that fund.
Okay, thank you.
So $3.1 to add, so just to follow this down, what Vice Mayor Yudi was saying. So I understand the fund balance at the end of the year for next year, so that's the 7.9 number on the bottom of the yellow column. Actually, if we take what Vice Mayor Yudi said. Actually, if we take what Vice Mayor Udi said, and you were just discussing, that number would actually be higher because before year end, we will also transfer money in proportion with our policy that we adopted for long-term financial health. And that number will be $3 million higher?
Obviously, approximately 3.2, just to be on, 3.2. So then you're looking at 8 million plus another 3.2 potentially to get you to, is that 11, a little over $11 million by end of 2021, fund balance.
11.1, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, I just wanted to put it all together. So I had the totals. And then that same, I was just curious. You said that you're projecting, or people are projecting that, you personally, that that drops though for the '21, '22, for example, for the following year of conservative estimate. Again, these are both conservative estimates, would be 2.1?
I would guess 2.1 is probably because right now it's projected to be 3.1 overall excess cash. So if you keep the reserve in our revenue, it's probably a good number to use, yeah.
So that's where we're going to see the greatest decrease, is expenses this year and then also the decrease in future years.
And your project expenditures, what are your assumptions for the out years? The 7.6, the 3.9, 3.7?
So the 7.6 is, it's driven off of the CIP schedule that was in the itemized items regards to the future years.
So it's assuming that all of these are approved?
Yes, yes. That has the assumption that all of it was to be approved in '21, '22.
So that includes...
Schedules would be very helpful for this, so we can see it.
And that includes a project like San Marino Center, the approximate estimate of 4 million that makes the bulk of the '21, '22 expenses. Because this year, it is just the planned cost, if you will.
Director Thon, if just eyeballing this schedule with the streets and the sidewalks and all that, it kind of looks like it's a $4 million a year. So in looking at the out years, should I be kind of saying 4 million in the out years is the ongoing streets and sidewalks?
Yes, that's the bulk of your expenditures in the out years. The big dollar is going to be street and sidewalks, and that's approximately 4 million.
So the one next year is really streets and sidewalks and assuming that this place gets remodeled?
Yes, that's what 2021 looks like. 2022 is probably some, some of also the San Marino Center bridges. If it was an approved project, it would bridge fiscal year. And then you would still also have your 3.5 million dollar planned street resurfacing plus another $300,000 or $400,000 of annual sidewalk replacement. So that's that 4 million. So the bump you see between next fiscal year and the following one is just the impacts of San Marino Center and any remaining expenses we have with our resurfacing project we're doing now, that's going to, some of the costs we carry will be rebudgeted into it because the project will not be 100%.
And then the final question for you. The not being able to spend the 4.8 this year, but making it, you know, 3.1, what were some of the major reasons for the 1.8 not being able to be deployed?
Primarily that we got our second resurfacing project in the fiscal year started later. So I don't have any billings against that. And that's about a $2.4 million project. So that's, so I had the Arbor, which will be completely expensed out this year, which was $600-plus thousand. Last year's resurfacing project, which completed this year, so it booked out this year. But not all of this year's project being booked this. So what I'm expecting is that now that we're on schedule with our resurfacing, we'll be able to design, build, and fully expense out our street resurfacing program project on an annual basis. And now we won't have this need to have monies rebudgeted and make it look weird like it does.
Thank you.
Okay. That's my presentation section.
All right, then what we're going to do is we'll turn to the items, starting first on page 26. And what we'll do is we go through each one of these. Hopefully, it's acceptable to the council. Is whoever the relevant staff member is, will just speak for a couple of minutes on each item to just give you a brief summary of what it is. And then you will have the opportunity to ask whatever questions you want and then ultimately come up with a decision on whether to include it in the CIP for next year or to remove it from next year's CIP. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Contra to tackle the both speed pieces of equipment.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. First of all, thank you very much for indulging my request to speak to you out of order. It's much appreciated. Today is rather busy for us all. The two items that are in front of you, the larger speed radar trailer and then the two portable speed feedback signs are similar to items that I've been requesting for the past three budgets. The reason that these are important items is, first of all, our speed trailer that we have for over 15 years is no longer serviceable and is not being used. It was repaired multiple times to try and get it to be used. We use that trailer or did use that larger trailer on our larger arterials to provide information for people who are speeding. The number one complaint that I hear from the community and also from each one of you seems to be speeding vehicles. Speeding is extremely important for us. That's why it's part of our initiative for this year. And these two items will provide almost a force multiplier in regards to not only using police officers with radar or LiDAR, our motor officers, but also on those streets where we don't have a presence for most of the day and we receive complaints of speeding, we can place these here. For example, the two smaller radar feedback signs or speed signs could be placed on, or I would place them on San Marino. If you're aware and you've seen the change with the speed limit signs, then it's 25 miles an hour. We can place one on the northbound and one on the southbound and remind people that this is what the speed is. And then that assists us when we do our enforcement, that these signs were out there. With the larger sign, we could do the same along Sierra Madre. We can also place it at different places along Huntington Drive. We, at the beginning of the school year and at different times throughout the school, I can place the signs, either the portable ones or the speed trailer signs at each school to remind people to slow down to 25 miles an hour, which is the speed limit when children are present, and at many of the many other locations throughout the city. These are both tools we would use daily. That is my pitch.
Do we have any questions, Councilmember Thon?
No, he answered my question in his explanation.
Councilmember Wong?
No, I don't have any question, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
One quick one, thank you, Mayor. I'm comforted to hear that you are hearing from multiple council members, not just me. I have a question on the first item, since we are all concerned with speeding, particularly when there is less traffic on the street. If that trailer is approved for the July 1 budget, when would you expect to be able to have it on hand?
I'm not sure if July 2nd is a week.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No questions.
Thank you, Chief, no questions. Well, I have one question. So the second, the smaller ones that you're getting two, those are approximately $5 a piece?
Yes, ma'am.
And the picture that we have here, obviously, is different in speed limits and things like that. Are those something that then your department then supplies? Or does it, do these come? I guess I don't understand this equipment. I understand the, the front one seems to be a more clear, but none of this speed limit 15, for example, doesn't match our city. So I just wanted to know about this particular, these less expensive ones, how that works in terms of implementing them for rollout.
We will have multiple speed limit signs, whether it's 25, 30, 35, 40, which are the speed limits within the city. And based upon where we place them, we need to place the speed limit sign in front of that to remind people as they're looking at, for instance, if we put speed limit 35 miles an hour for Sierra Madre and the response from the sign says 45, they know what the speed limit is and where they're exceeding. It's partly education, which is also part of our priority initiative. And it assists us with enforcement as we testify or go before court when we cite people.
And so those signs are the, if you would, the mile-per-hour speed limit signs aren't fixed in the sense we're going to change out as appropriate for the location on that, and on both of them, really.
Yes. I'm sorry.
No, so that's something we have in stock. They're just normal signs that then you change.
Yes, we have the ability through the street department to do that. And we were doing that with the older trailer also. Based upon where it was placed, the speed limit on that street, we would place the appropriate sign.
And did I, is the older trailer, I think I saw it not that long ago, pre-COVID, but I mean, within the last six months, easy. This year, probably, it was out. And I think it was out recently. Or did you borrow from other departments when, I would say, a month and a half ago, there was some speed signs on Huntington because the speeds, when there weren't many people around, seemed to be going up? Am I correct? There was one on the west side of town and along Huntington?
We rented through Parks and Public Works two signs that were much larger than the three that were proposing to place them because of the excessive speeds on Huntington. And we did that for one month to assist us with educating the community and the public as they travel through the city.
Great, okay. So those were not the one, the one that we have is totally defined?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, do we have any questions that have come online about this item?
We do not have any comments for this particular item.
Thank you. So bring that back to council. Do we have a motion? Or, I'm sorry, do we have a discussion? I start with Councilmember Thon.
I'm in favor of these. I think they serve a very valuable purpose.
Councilmember Wong?
I concur.
Councilmember, excuse me, Jacobowski?
A timely, yes.
Vice Mayor?
I'm fine with it, or with both of them.
Thank you. And I'm supporting it as well. So thank you very much. I think the direction of the council. And I know that we need to skip ahead so that you may go to other appointments. And to what item or where we...
Page 39, I think.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
We'll move to the 911 dispatch center renovation, which is most of the way down on the page 26 and then page 39 for details, the Vice Mayor suggested.
Chief?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This item is for our dispatchers. They sit in the room and several of you, if not all of you, have gone into that dispatch office and seen what the responsibilities of our dispatchers are each and every day serving this community. They sit in front of four screens, actually, five screens. They have to answer a phone, multiple phones, and speak on the radio. And one of the largest problems or most significant problems for dispatcher is repetitive injuries and also the issue of being unhealthy, sitting in one place, not being able to stand and operate the equipment that's in front of them. And what this proposal is, is to allow us to renovate the dispatch center to where we have two consoles. In case one breaks, we have the other one, and we do that now. But we will place desks and tables so that tables and desks can either be raised or lowered, that the dispatchers can move, that they don't have the repetitive stress injuries that could cause ongoing injury on duty costs to the city or costs to the city. And it does help with the morale. It does help with the ability for the dispatchers to work in this environment. They do an exceptional job. Their responsibilities are answering calls from the public, answering the 911 calls, responding to the officers, handling people that walk into the station for information. And the ability to sit and do their work in a ergonomically correct environment reduces stress, physical stress, emotional stress, and will highly contribute to the productivity of our employees.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Councilmember Thon?
Yes, how much of this can be done in-house since the construction cost is estimated to be $55,000? And my recollection is we've raised the ability for public contracting to $60,000. Can any savings be incurred by doing this in-house?
I currently don't have enough skilled staff to do this in-house. And it would be much more efficient for us, really, to contract it out and manage a contractor to come in and do some of the renovations that would be required.
Will this have to go through the bidding process? Because it is $55,000.
Yes, it's over the manager's signature authority. So we would, we would go through a public bidding process just as part of our purchasing ordinance anyway. So we would have to get through bids and have some specifications for them, for the, for contractors to understand what it is that we want them to do. There's also material procurement, which is like the desks are purchased separately from some of the just general cleanup of the room, replacing carpet, placing the ceiling tiles, painting it. I mean, that sort of basic stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I don't know who the appropriate person is to answer this. We have generally agreed that there are a number of rooms and parts of public safety that are way past their refurbishment. Did we not talk about previously an overview to get an assessment, what it would take to bring this place up to usable standards? And if so, what was the status of that?
We did perform a condition assessment on the building last year, and we did share those results with the Public Safety Commission. Overall, the building is okay. I guess is the best way. It's not in really bad shape, but it's, of course, not brand new. So this type of tenant improvement is totally appropriate. As we go through, the building will ultimately and eventually have to be seriously looked at from a spatial utilization standpoint with the way the chief is operating his department and just their general needs for how they serve the public and the special work that they do. We will at some point have to look at how the space is utilized, which is different than the condition of the building. When you did spend some monies last year to put a new roof on it, so that was a very beneficial thing. We spent some effort to make sure that none of the plumbing was leaking because we were having issues with the basement area. And so this is just part of an incremental, slow upgrade as we go through. But the overall utilization of the building, it's configured very oddly and it's not overly efficient. There's a server room upstairs, which is a very weird place to put server room. And there are those sorts of studies that we will want to entertain in the future. But currently, the building is serviceable.
Yes, and I think you see where I'm going with this. When you say it's okay, $75,000 is nothing to sneeze at. And if next year, we have another component part of this that needs its own modernizing in this poorly designed building, I'm just afraid of us cumulatively going through $300,000, $400,000 over a few years, not having seen the study. And I was wondering if there was an efficient way that we could look a little bit beyond this particular piece so that we could get more bang for our buck or the fees that it would take to get this in order. But I guess I'm hearing you say not to count on anyone coming back to us with anything unforeseen, of course, not included in the next year for something similar? unforeseen, of course, not included, in the next year for something similar?
The building is okay, it is not efficient, it is, can be improved quite a bit, we have filled pretty much every part of it. The problems will be as new requirements come up, whether they're legislative, whether we find that there's a problem with the structure itself, those will come up and we'll have to make modifications. I think the most recent modifications besides this desk and the dispatch center area was the great support received from the council when we renovated the old jail and created an exceptional working space for our detectives, added an evidence space, added an interview room, and added additional storage. That is what I see over the next several years, to where there may be a need to replace the facility itself, there may be a need to completely renovate the facility, and I agree with you, Councilmember, that to piecemeal this is not the best way to do it. I look at this more of a way to reduce risk and to reduce liability with potential injuries to employees, to creating a cleaner environment in which to work. We have had repeated issues with dust, with spiders, bugs, you name it, in that room. Last year's help with removing the carpeting from the wall was also helpful in reducing some of this vermin. And we are more than willing to take the time over the next year and prior to the beginning of budget to work with Parks and Public Works on coming up with a comprehensive plan of the lifespan of the building, what could be done with talking to experts on police facilities, and determining what's appropriate. And it may be that the best approach, basically, is to continue to piecemeal and upgrade, or, and quite frankly, as in my prior life with LAPD, I worked in a station that was renovated, and it was renovated to a extremely efficient, cleaner, and they found room somehow within the same shell to create a very nice police facility that's still being used. And then I've also worked in a place that the result of it being torn down and started from scratch. So it's our responsibility to make sure that you're able to ask those questions and provide your answers.
I appreciate your response, and if we were to support this this time around, this would be the last time I would want to do this without a more efficient study, preferably next year, to give us options and also taking into account what code or require other requirements you may run into. But I think we're long past due to extrapolating out whatever the Public Safety Commission looked at and see what it looks like, I know emergency ops center, we've got some concerns about that, I think we just need to look at this campus rather than in back, rather than keep piecemealing, so thank you for that detailed information, it's helpful.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Wong?
If we approve this, when do you think the next renovation will be, another decade or twenty years?
I'm hoping it's not done while I'm still here. I really don't know, Councilmember. The one location that I really want to change is our lobby, it is a pretty lousy place.
Elevate your size.
Yes, when you talk about welcoming the community, and especially in light of what is going on now, we have to have the ability to be transparent, we have to have the ability to be welcoming, we have to have the ability to have an openness, and our front desk with that sliding thick piece of plexiglass, no ADA compliance, doesn't send that message, and it's very important to provide that to all of our community people and those that come in for service from the community. I hope it's not a long time, but I think it's very important that we do comprehensively look at the facility itself.
So should we wait for the overhaul of the whole department, or still go ahead with just this dispatch center?
I would not want you to wait, I really believe deeply that this is important, it's important to the employees, and also, wearing my risk manager hat, the ensuring that we don't have any industrial injuries or comp issues, that this is a great way to reduce that, and I think it's money well spent just on that issue alone.
And I'm also concerned with the switching from the dispatch center to the EOC, do you anticipate any downtime?
No, we've, the department has operated in the past in the EOC, and it's just a matter of setting up the equipment and then walking across the hall once it's there, and then doing the same once we turn the switch on the new dispatch center desk area, or rather, the dispatch desk.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
I only had a question, I think it's from Michael Throne, having to do with the engineering for this, I didn't, was just kind of struck by, I support redoing this, and I think it's a pressing need, from what I've understood in conversations with you, and I appreciate that, but since it's like desk, carpet, screens, proper chairs, electrical work, I'm trying to figure out what would cost, I think twenty thousand dollars for engineering plans seems like a lot, and so what are we engineering?
In this particular project, dispatch centers are very much a boutique niche of architecture, and I anticipated that we would have to spend a little bit of time and effort to find the right kind of architect to help us out with this. I would not anticipate spending all of it, but in general, this is a comfortable number level for me to be able to maybe hire one or two. Generally, when we purchase built-in furniture, we have to hire an interior designer that works with the fabricator, so that there's usually several thousand dollar costs there, and in order to secure any building permits that we may need to have, depending on the extensiveness of our interior improvements, we need to have plans prepared for that, so I can go through the building permit process.
This is from our building planning department, right?
That is correct, yes, because in this case, we're a customer of them, and while we may not need to pay fees, we will need to prepare plans and specs that the code reviewers would take a look at, and so that would be a part and parcel of that estimated expenditure.
So am I understanding that, so you're actually redoing walls to do this, built-in monitors and chairs and desks?
Well, as we are going to look at the entire space and to clean it up, if we have to move receptacles, we're going to put holes in the wall.
What's a receptacle?
Where your electrical outlets are, all the communication lines that come in and out of there, we'll have to see how they need to be reconfigured, all the lighting needs to be redone. It is, it's an intensive research function in order to have someone to come in and do that. In my experience, you often have projects that are small in scope and disproportionately more expensive to have that sort of engineering and architecture worked on, because there is a fixed amount of time and there's a fixed amount of usual rates for that. Our intent is to obviously, as always, be as economical as possible, and this gives us a little bit of an extra cushion if we need it in order to have, to bring in more than one consultant if we need to re-encounter anything out of the ordinary.
If I may add, very plainly, a couple of years ago, we upgraded our radio system, and we upgraded with additional equipment, that's where we went to five screens from two screens, we went to the level of dispatch capability that was required by the state. We put it in the same place, so basically what we did is if you can imagine, if you saw the Christmas story, and if you remember the Christmas tree with the multiple plugs and the one outlet, that's the best way to describe the situation we're in right now. And what the, this upgrade will allow us to make sure that fits the codes, it is safe, it is a better environment, so that's part of what's going on. So basically, we're going to make it safer, cleaner, more easily to be used, and then also ergonomically supporting our employees.
Thank you. Do we have any comments by Zoom or email in regard to this?
We do not have any.
Okay, we'll give them a second, a few seconds.
We don't have any.
Thank you. All right, so if you get them, let us know, if somebody's still turning on the system, we'll go to council discussion or decisions. Councilmember Tal, I think you were leading off this.
That is correct, thank you, Mayor, I, it's very interesting to hear the conversation regarding what the future needs will be, how, we do have a present need here, I do believe that there are various, very substantial reasons to have this done, so I support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, for the reasons Chief presented, I support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I can support this.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
I support this as well.
Thank you, and I support this, appreciate it, thank you very much, Chief and Director Throne, for informing us about the needs and going through that, questions regarding this item.
Thank you, and maybe I'll see you somewhere meet tomorrow.
You'll see me.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Council, for indulging the movement, we will return back up to the top and begin again with the streetlight management program, and I think since these might be continuing programs, maybe we could combine these top three together?
Yes, streetlight management plan and traffic control devices, and then the drainage wash improvement, these are all programs the council initiated back in 2019 to provide the financial resources for us to upgrade and replace and repair those three different parts of our capital facilities, which would be the streetlights, traffic control devices, which are traffic signals and whatnot, and then our drainage washes, which are concrete line channels.
All right, do we have any, sorry, so now we are on page, just so I'm with you, twenty-nine we're dealing, and do you want to go to thirty?
Well, this would be twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, as the manager said, these are three ongoing programs that we would like to continue.
All right, do we have any questions, Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
No, no questions.
Councilmember Tal?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
And so we'll be finishing up the wash improvement program after this year?
My goal is to complete it and then, as part of this coming fiscal year, present to you the results of the stormwater system condition assessment, and then you'll see fifty thousand dollars as a bargain.
Okay, so thank you very much then, so it sounds like everybody's fine with this, we're getting off the hook at a good price, I guess, I'll take that to mean, so thank you very much for continuing your work in this regard. Next, we have the street tree management plan.
Thank you, Mayor, as part of your initiative last year to create the urban forester position and to help us out with jump-starting our urban forest program, we would like to receive some funds to plant up to fifty box trees, this would be trees much larger than our standard fifteen-gallon, and to make a sort of a big splash of installing trees in certain areas, we've got some locations where it really would be nice to put in a larger tree, our current operating budget only really supports the fifteen-gallon trees, and so these larger trees are a much larger capital asset, and so we're looking to, as it says in the staff report, plant up to fifty, up to thirty-six inch box.
All right, Councilmember Wong, did you have questions about this?
No, I think it's a tie, and more than that, thank you.
Councilmember Tal, did you have any questions?
Yes, I noticed that in the Huntington Drive and Mission Street beautification project includes trees as well, would these fifty trees, are any, do you have plans as to where these fifty trees are going to go, and would any of them include Huntington Drive and Mission?
We have a lot of good spaces out in the residential areas that really are driving toward placing these larger trees, we would sort of steer away, at least for this coming year, those are the main drives, because we can fund the trees along Huntington, for instance, if we wanted to do that with other monies and other projects and just have it as an amenity, this is sort of a separate standalone on residential streets, and those places generally don't have like a dedicated funding source, like you would if I was doing a street resurfacing project, it could pop a couple of trees in there because it would be lost in the cost of the larger project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you. I have a question about the sourcing, so it's sort of intriguing, through the government purchasing program, is it a pass-through to, say, retail, and what kind of discount is there?
We get wholesale from the nurseries, so we do not pay the same costs as if you were to go to retail nursery and say, oh, you know, if you go to Moon Valley and say, I want to buy a thirty-six inch tree, you will pay, you know, a dollar an inch kind of thing. We get a much more generous discount, we get it at wholesale, we also develop relationships with nurseries all over Southern California, so we source from a variety of locations that generally are not open to the public, so we do get more than a twenty percent discount in many cases.
So this particular government program is what this is that you just described to me?
No, this is what we get as a commercial customer, we, there is really no government purchasing program for trees.
Okay, that was just the wording here, that I was curious about, government purchasing opportunity, so it's good to hear that we get good prices on the things that we do. I remember when your now urban forester talked in the past about finding great bargains on roses, so I think that kind of purchasing should continue whenever we have the opportunity as a city, so it's good to hear this, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No comments.
I had a, two comments, one, I was wondering the type of tree are we, for your questions, are we going to focus on heritage trees, for example, because, and matching whatever it is in the neighborhoods, I know it's a plan that was laid out decades ago, and I know that Sam, excuse me, urban forester, Mr. Estrada, has spoken about that and the plan, and we have discussed it in the past, so these are going to be street, front street, trees, excuse me, in our neighborhoods, so will they primarily match or be heritage replacements?
Yes, absolutely, we're going to, at least initially, follow the current street tree palette, that's under review by our urban forester because times have changed, and there are certain species we can't get anymore, and there's health and all that kind of stuff, which we've talked about, but we are looking at, if we're going to go and buy a thirty-six inch box tree, it's going to be a very nice heritage tree, because we want to maintain that character of each block of each neighborhood.
Great, thank you, and then I think you said that these would not be the ones that would go on Huntington or Sierra Madre in the medians and those type of things, and I was just curious as to whether we've considered, since those are park areas, and putting that in air quotes, that everybody goes to, have we considered possibly getting park funds from the county or things like that to replace, because there are some holes in there, I think we took out some trees over the last couple of years, or lost, and had to take out, and so I wonder if you can suggest that to your department, just consider applying for park funds for some of those tree replacements, aside from the commercial development beautification, but, because those are designated as parks. because those are designated as parks.
We have, if I recall correctly, about a quarter million dollars of Proposition 68 park bonds money that are just a block grant to us for parks. As I mentioned, as part of my remarks to Councilmember Thalt, that's where we would use that money in those locations. This money is for those off locations that, just like with street resurfacing, you won't be able to get federally a grant to resurface a cul-de-sac.
Thank you. All right, so do we have a, or do we have any comments or questions before I move on to final council conclusion online, either by Zoom or email?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We do have one comment on, excuse me, on our Zoom chat from Ms. Barlow that says, "There has to be a watering program for the trees in the public parkways. The drought is killing some of the ones put in during recent years."
Thank you very much. Any other comments? We can bring that back. Is there, Director Thrum? Did you have a response? I think we, my understanding was that because we have lost, as the resident just mentioned, Ms. Marlo, Farlow, some of the trees due to the lack of water that we've planted lately. I think that was the ones that Mariposa was planting and then, as our subcontractor, and they were replacing them and monitoring them. Would that also be true for this project as well? So that they would be checked at least for proper water for the first couple of years?
Part of the cost of purchasing the trees is the ongoing plant maintenance. And so that's, that's why the, it may appear that the unit cost of the trees is very large, but it also includes the cost of a year's worth of maintenance because we haven't had that experience that we plant stuff and then we don't take care of it. So building it into the cost of the planting is how we're moving ahead with our street tree program.
And along the same line, so would there be a checklist of like locations? And is the company that you get the trees from, or the trees, excuse me, from, responsible for that maintenance? Or would it be our own department?
It would be ours. And what we would do is we would, depending on the size of the tree, 36 inches is a very large tree. So generally, those who sell you and plant the tree for you don't maintain it. But then we would take any of the difference between what we budgeted for the tree and the cost of it. We would basically push that over to Mariposa as part of their general landscape maintenance for us when it comes to tree care.
And add it to their list.
Yes.
Thank you. Sure.
As a follow-up question to that, I am concerned that we did have those that we planted and we lost not long ago. For purposes of just tracking these trees, would it make any sense to spread it over two years to see how the first group does? Because I would not want us to run into problems. This is a different venue, if you will, where we're planting them. Or are you feeling total confidence that they will be good?
The more trees we plant, the easier it is for us to assign our contractor to maintain them. Because if they have to drive all over town for three trees, it's more expensive for them and more time-consuming for them to do it than if they're everywhere they go, there's a tree for them to maintain. So we get a better diligence on that. As these trees won't necessarily be susceptible to what you might have. If you planted a block of trees all in the same area, if one gets diseased, they all get diseased at the same time. These trees will be interspaced all over town. And so that mixed in with the annual tree trimming contract that we have from Mariposa, they'll be captured, they'll be in the database, they'll be checked in on as part of what we require them to do for us.
So this is up to 50 trees?
Yes.
Thank you. And just to then make sure, did anybody else online have comments either by email or Zoom on this?
I heard there are comments on this item.
And any other questions? Then we'll bring it back to council. And for discussion, I think it started with Councilmember Wong?
I can support this, thank you.
Councilmember Thalt?
I'm fine with it.
Councilmember Jacobowski? Okay. Vice Mayor Yudi?
I support it.
I support it too, and hope you bring it back next year for another 50. Thank you.
The next item, Mayor, is an item that has the B word in it, which is bus. And I can use the M word, which might be metro. We have a bus shelter across from City Hall that is very old and really needs to be taken care of properly. And so our project is to first design a replacement and then following up with designing a replacement and establishing what a replacement cost would be, then bringing back a proposal to you to replace it. But first things first would be to design a replacement of that bus shelter that meets actual building codes of 2020. So the request before you is just funds to do that work, not to do any construction, but just to design a suitable replacement.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, I'm a little bit confused, and I probably just not reading this correctly. So when it says source of funding, and there's Measure AC and 68 C note below, I'm missing those notes. Are they there, but I'm not seeing where that would be?
The note below, it would be the third sentence, which is, "Construction funding may be available using regional transit and state park bond monies." So we may be able to use transit money for the replacement. We may be able to use some of that Proposition 68 funds because that intersection corner is designated as parkland for the city of San Marino. So we do have an ability to create a nexus between the work we do at that location and it being a park. So we have some funding opportunities. In order to move the process along swifter, using your own funds to perform a design, gets you to the place where then you, when you go to those agencies to request funding, you already have a design in hand and with a cost estimate. It makes it much simpler for them to grant you money if you're already ready to go.
This is sort of a unique structure, and I know it has historic significance in town. But based on your previous experiences in other cities, do you feel it's realistic that there would be funding available? I'm not crazy about 50 to 75,000 on our own.
I believe that there's a, it's a very strong contender. It's a bus shelter. It is a place where Metro does stop. They do like that stop there. There's, they may be eventually committed to keeping a route on Huntington. I don't think there would be much uneligibility for this project to either capture transit funds or Proposition 68 funds.
Thank you. Councilmember Thalt?
Yeah, I don't think we should spend this money until we figure out what next gen is going to come up with. Maybe, you know, you're building a bridge to nowhere, potentially. So I think I would like to put this off a year, but.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I concur with Councilmember Thalt. But also, I would like to find out what the current cost of maintenance per year is right now.
Well, we really don't spend very much money maintaining it at all. The only time we really significantly maintain it is when we get a complaint about exposed electrical wires or peeling paint. And then in the fall, when it all of a sudden becomes Santa's workshop there, the elves do whatever it is they need to do to make sure that the white building that's placed over the bad building, the bad building doesn't collapse on them. So we, to answer your question even more directly, Councilmember, we do not spend very much money at all on this.
Because after, you know, the new renovation is done, the cost would be $7,000 per year, right? According to what you have here.
All right, the last line?
Yes.
That would be because we would be wanting to maintain the asset that we just spent a lot of money on. We would want to keep it. The current facility really is, it's out of sight, out of mind. I don't think it gets nearly the same care as there's a duplicate one over by the high school that the high school takes care of. We really don't spend a lot of time on the building, and it doesn't make much sense to build something new and then not maintain it. So that would be our estimate to make sure that, as a bus shelter, you have to maintain them in a certain fashion. You have to make sure that they're clean and free from graffiti and free from anything that's broken. And we generally only respond to complaints when we get them on that.
Yeah, more like I said earlier, that we should wait until, you know, we figure out what next gen wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Yudi?
No, no questions.
I would be interested, I did pull up, I was trying to research how old it was, and I have pictures of the winter house, or Santa's workshop, from 1957 to 1960s that you could find online from press, which is really wonderful. But I don't know when the structure itself was built. And I don't know, I would actually ask, and I was thinking, it might actually be a potential strong resource if it's been. And I don't know if our expert, who we have hired for the survey, has given any comment on the structure itself. Do you know? I know Aldo's sitting here in anticipation of the next section. I don't know that it was designated, but if it hasn't yet been at least reviewed, I would add that to our list to consider. Because I do think it's one of the things that makes our community unique, both around the holidays as well as otherwise. And I would rather see us also take the route of maintaining what we have, like the one at the high school, and do a better job and fix it up than rebuild new. So at least put it off for another year and see if it's even going to be entered. And we'll have more information as to its historic value, is what I would suggest. I think that's, everybody, what's happening this year? What, I'm sorry?
I'd like to see you pushed out of here, please. Yes.
And I'd request that we do some research into it with our historical resource survey. Next, we have the public stair replacement, Virginia Road to Park Place.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, the stairway that goes from Virginia Road up to Park Place is original. It's at least 50 years old from just looking at the age of the concrete. It's starting to experience some structural failures. It's got some lateral creep in it that breaks the concrete. It's certainly not conforming to any real building codes anymore. And we would like to replace it with the same, but new.
Okay, Councilmember, did I start with you yet? Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Thalt?
I have no questions.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions.
I have no questions. Do we have any questions? Or comments online through Zoom platform or email at this time?
We do not on this item.
All right, so bringing this back to council. Councilmember Jacobowski, do you have a recommendation on this capital budget?
I do. When I visited this site with Director Thrum last year, it was because at the first landing, there was a significant crack. And there is significant, maybe not COVID times, but otherwise, significant use of this area, very heavy use. And you even pointed out to me on the two drainage areas on the side that basically they're hollow underneath, and there's really nothing there. On the risers, they're starting to have a lot of falling debris from those. So I think it's on the verge of becoming dangerous and definitely a liability for the folks who use it. So I have to support it.
Councilmember Wong?
I'll take on Councilmember Jacobowski's words for it.
Councilmember Thalt?
I've used it. I don't see the need for spending money this year. I disagree with the conclusion that it is unsafe. People seem to use it safely. I've been out there the last two weekends using it, and I, I just don't want to spend $80,000 this year on a project that still has, gets plenty of use successfully without any real risk. But that is my opinion.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
I too would push this one. I think we have a lot of money to spend on some other things.
And I too would push it at this time until there's a, until next year. Just leave it at that. Right, so this one will be removed along with the previous one. Right. Emergency telephones at Lacy Park?
Thank you, Mayor. This is very simply the installation of up to three emergency telephones at Lacy Park and one at the Virginia Stairs. You may have seen these other, in other locations, there are the poles with the blue lights on them. Our IT telephone system totally accommodates this. And so really, it's just a matter of purchasing them and having them installed. And we're off to the races.
Councilmember Thalt?
Where would you put them in the park? Well, first of all, has the Garden Club or any Lacy Park Oversight Committee taken a look at this?
Regrettably, we've not been able to meet with the Lacy Park Landscape Committee since March.
I would put off recommending until we do have an opportunity to talk to them.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I agree. Maybe we should wait till, you know, the Garden Club and the Lacy Park Committee, wait and see how this goes. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No comment.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
I think this makes sense. We could get the Park Committee to help with the placement of it, but it's not a lot of money, and it's public safety, so I would support this.
I also would support it. My concern was just the one on by the stairs as to whether that's an issue about drivability because it's a very narrow street there, and I don't know if it would be distracting. I don't know about the placement and the height level of the blue light and how bright it is. Just because that's such a narrow, dark area at night, I didn't want it to be an issue. It was my only concern about the placement by Virginia Stairs. But I support the two, going ahead with the two at the park. And it could be brought up at a meeting, our next meeting, hopefully by Zoom, or if not, anyway, before they're installed, that the Landscape Committee could just weigh in on the exact locations of at least the two in the park. Would be my suggestion. Do we have any comments by Zoom or email about the emergency telephones?
We do not have any comments, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, bringing it back, so I think I started as, Councilmember Thalt, you still would like to postpone this for next year?
Well, I just want to make sure that the, those that use the park and those that have oversight of the park have the ability to review this to, and maybe, maybe, I understand the need for it. I don't know if it's backed up by facts, but if you put them in some places where they're both, they don't ruin the park, and then I would be in support of it. But let's be very careful where we place them. But obviously, you want them to be seen enough, but you also don't want them to be a problem. So I could support it under those conditions.
All right, thank you. And I think, okay, so going before the Landscape, Lacy Park Landscape Committee then. Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, I think it would be a nice, or I know it's for public safety, but what's the chance of, I mean, just one resident at the park in the afternoon? I don't know. I think it can wait. Or maybe needs more review, more input from the public. I don't want them to complain to us that it's a nice or late. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
I have a quick question. Is there a standard height for these? Or do they vary depending on the setting in which they're located?
They're typically about the same height as the street sign. So the blue light is up about seven feet, and then the telephone area is where you are. And it's actually a little bit lower so that it's accessible to people that have mobility issues. And typically, you place them either at locations of high congestion of people or parking lots. And we do have two parking lots, the Turner Parking Lot, which is subject And we do have two parking lots, the Turner parking lot, which is subject to quite amount of theft. And then the St. Albans one, which is way hidden in the back. Those would be locations that I would speak with the Lacy Park Landscape Committee. But then you could also, if the Virginia Stairs one doesn't quite work out logistically, then you would be able to perhaps place one somewhere inside the park, maybe by the playground. I mean, wherever it does make sense. But the answer is they're about seven or eight feet tall, I think, at the end of the day.
Thank you. And we're getting input on our body?
Yeah.
Yes, I think I could support these and you brought up a good point, particularly in view of unfortunately the rash of thefts that we're seeing. After the bodies give their input.
Council member Wong?
Yes, can I ask another question? Have you checked with the police department or fire department on like what, you know, what's the chance of getting a, I mean, emergency of this happening that would require this?
I did have a chance to talk to Chief Incontroll on this and he supports, you know, any of the things that we can do to help the communication for people who are in the park. Not everyone has cell phones or, you know, knows what to do. These are very common installations. You see them at college campuses everywhere. There's one over at Garfield Park over in Pasadena that's right there. I mean, it's at the corner of a residential neighborhood. People know how to behave with those, they don't have to think about, you pick up the phone and you're talking to dispatch right now.
You know, if we approve this, we go through this, should we put a pole there? You know, you say it's going to be seven feet tall, at least that the resident know what's going to be happening there and see if they have any objections?
Well, these would be inside the park and as council member Tal suggested, the Landscape Committee would be our resource to making sure that they're visible and do their job and at the same time not necessarily detract from the beauty of the park.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I support this.
Okay. And I support it as well, so this will be in?
Yes, let me just be sure for our record's sake. I'm recording all of you as a yes. Council member Wong, are you a no though?
I'm saying.
Okay, there, thank you. Next, we have the Civics Facilities Condition Assessment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a continuation of a program we did last year where we looked at the police and fire stations and we did get their conditions assessed where we were able to come up with that great assessment of the police station as being okay. I'm very much looking forward to doing the same sort of assessment at the rest of the buildings in the City Hall, which is the Corporation Yard, the Fleet Building and the Public Works Headquarters Building there, as well as all of the Lacy Park buildings. We've got some buildings that were, that are original to Lacy Park and it would be a very good idea to just have them run through by, I wasn't thinking potentially the same firm that we used last time. They did both police and fire buildings in one day for about $3,500. And so I'm looking to sort of duplicate that same great deal and level of effort and just know more about what it is we have so that we can do that next step, which is thinking about what do we want to do with them in the future? Should the conditions arise that we would like to replace them or should other conditions arise where we have to replace them? For instance, even earthquake or something like that where now the building is totally unusable.
Council member Wong?
Yes, I can support this, I don't have a question, thank you.
Council member Jacobowski? Oh, I'm sorry, questions? I have none. Council member Tal?
I have no questions.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
And I have no questions. Do we have any public questions or comments on this item on Zoom or via email coming in?
We do not.
So then I'll go back to bring this back to council. Let me know if somebody does raise a hand in the next 30 seconds, a couple minutes. Council member Wong, your conclusion about this item?
Yes, I can support it, thank you.
Council member Jacobowski?
Yes.
Council member Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And I do as well. And thank you for finding the contractor that did the assessment. I appreciate that and the reasonable price that it came in, so I appreciate that. Next, we have San Marino Center renovation.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously what's before you is the proposal to renovate this lovely building into a state of the art, a community event facility, which is, this is one of your Council, City Council priorities. The discussion here on this particular project is to whether or not to include it into the capital program and move forward or not.
Thank you. First, do we have any questions? Council member Jacobowski?
No questions.
Council member Tal?
No, I have no questions.
Council member Wong?
No questions.
Council member, Vice Mayor Yudi, I keep doing that, I apologize, Vice Mayor Yudi, I'm on a roll.
Just a point of clarification, this is to go forward with the design of a renovation. It's not necessarily a thumbs up or thumbs down on the conceptual renovation that was on the website or in the Tribune.
This is thumbs up or thumbs down to go forward with designing a renovation and then deciding what it is that you want to do.
Sorry, can you say that again? Because I also had.
So this is whether or not you want to include this project in the capital program and start a process to discuss design and to look at the plans for the project.
So the conceptual designs that we had seen is really just to get a ballpark on what a budget might be?
Yes.
To start the thought process?
Yes. And in order to come forward, part of your priority initiative process was to do more, was to do enough work, enough research to see, you know, what the feasibility is on things. And so from our perspective, it is feasible to renovate this building. There's a certain cost associated with it, which is what's in front of you. And then at this point, it's up to the council to choose to include it in the capital program or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was, I had the question concerning the amount of $400,000. So, and I don't know what we're getting for that amount of money. Because it's based on the cost estimate from the drawings that have already been done. The concept drawings, let's call them that. I don't know what you call them, if there's a proper name for what was in the newspaper.
Yes, that is correct. What we did was we took the conceptual design and we had it estimated. And then from that, we applied a factor to that construction cost, which would give us an estimate for a design cost. And then on the other end, the estimate, an estimate for what a construction management inspection would be on for that. So those are estimates. If the project is approved to be included in the capital program, then we would refine those, the cost to do design by seeking proposals from the architect who did the conceptual design already for us. With that number being the absolute ceiling of it because.
This number here?
That number that you see, which is the $400,000 number, that's the absolute ceiling because it will not cost that much to design this particular project. But to keep within the general parameters of estimating a project cost, generally design is about 10% of construction and construction management is about 10% of construction. It doesn't mean it has to be. And I know I've received plenty of great direction from the council, that that's the upper level of costs that we should incur on a project.
And I was also trying to understand as part of this phase of going for the design and with the community or process that you're talking about as well, will that include considering who the architect would be or who the firm, I don't know who chose the architect that gave us those drawings and whether that should be something as well that the community is considering or who made that decision?
We chose Crane Architectural Group because they have been involved in the city for several years on projects. They've spent a lot of time and effort over at Stoneman. They were easily to get a hold of and they really enjoyed working with San Marino. They enjoyed the opportunity to prepare these plans. They would be one of the architects that we would ask to prepare a cost proposal for us. Once we get the parameter of yes, we want to move forward with the renovation of the building, we have a building program based on how we want to use the building and then with, and then to seek what the, see what the cost proposals would be with that upper $400,000 being the absolute limit of what that cost would be.
Right, so will we approach other architects as well during this process and when does that happen?
If the council approves this project to be included in the CIP, if they, if you do that, then we would start July 1st, but we could start some work preliminarily before that. If that occurs today, if the council says yes, we want to include it, I can start some preparatory work to prepare our request for proposals and whatnot and get it out as quickly as possible.
And would those include additional design? I mean, did they would start from scratch again in a, from the facade and what the looks are building and that type of thing? Or I don't, I just, I don't know, given what was shared with the community and in the paper, what's the next step? I understand if including an amount in next year so we could go forward and have this done, I'm just trying to understand and have people who are, might be listening or listen later, what the next step is and does that include then vetting architects and treatment of what we expect here, this building to look like and things like that? As well as use with the rec department?
I'm actually going to tackle this one. The next step, if you include this in the CIP today, would be for us to have some conversation with the community. The drawings will release, the conceptual plans, so that the community could get a sense of what it looked like. And as you know, obviously they were forwarded to you as well. You, of course, are part of the community and we want to get your thoughts on the design if you do go ahead and include this in the CIP. Once we have feedback from the community, we'll have a much better idea of where we stand. There are two potential ends of the continuum that could occur and of course lots of options in between. If after we got feedback from the community as a whole, including your individual feedback as well, there was a general consensus that the conceptual plans that we happen to have meet everybody's needs, then we could potentially move forward. It might be cheaper to move forward directly with Crane Architects because they already done all of this work. So we might be able to bring to you a more cost-effective proposal. On the complete other side of this continuum, if we continue to get feedback from the community and the current conceptual plan is not meeting what the community wants and we're going to be starting from scratch, then there's not even an economic reason to continue necessarily with Crane Architects and we would open up the process more. And there's, I'm sure, an infinite number of possibilities in there, but until we start getting back from the community, which we can't really do until we hear from you officially today, we just don't know what path that will take.
Thank you. And do we also have a needs assessment as to the, both the rec department, what those, what these rooms will look like and how they plan to use them, as well as what community groups have we reached out to, the groups that commonly use this or might be interested in renting this facility? For example, City Club's an obvious one. We've all been here and I'm sure they have leadership that would comment on what works and what doesn't for their organization. And I didn't even know 70 people came here for yoga class or whatever. So, you know, have we built those into the size and the shape? Because I did see online the interior space and the sizes and so I just didn't know, we don't, also don't have a needs list, like what groups are here? We done a study or analysis to understand what it means to have a community center, not just a rec department center, but with other groups that are our community groups? Who was doing that?
At this, at the, at this point for a conceptual design, we spoke, or I spoke with for six months when I was leading the Recreation Division, we worked out what they see as what, from their perspective, the programs and limitations to the building. Building has a lot of interior limitations, which does not make it a very friendly space to lead, to rent out for events and activities. If the council does approve going forward with this project and including it in the CIP, then our, part of the next step that City Manager remarked about was we would go out now and talk to the folks that use this building outside of this, outside of recreation and see if they have any specific suggestions or needs that are currently not being accommodated by this building and then see how that fits into the conceptual plan.
Right, and I would appreciate it if you'd go back, we'd go down this road to some of the past years, because I know the facility hasn't been used much lately for a variety of reasons, but also look a couple of years back because I think it was more actively used by community groups in the past. As well as look at how often the bathroom at the library is double booked or can't accommodate because that seems to have been, everybody goes there in a lot of nights in any given month. And so to think about how these rooms could serve those needs as well. Or sometimes they actually have caps on their program because not enough people fit in the bathroom. So I'd like to see a greater analysis maybe because I think of this not as a rec center, but a community center. And so I think we need to bring in some of those other uses and groups to comment on what they like to see, whatever we can do within the envelope and make sure those are included. So I'm hoping that this money will also go to some of that analysis, whether it's staff time or somebody to come in here and actually look at the space and try to use it efficiently to serve the greatest needs of the community. Do we have any Zoom comments or, and or emails?
We do. Ms. Jagels would like to speak and I also have some written comments from her. So when she speaks, I'll let her indicate if she'd also like me to read her written Give us just a minute, Ms. Jagels, we're trying to unmute you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Honorable Mayor Gretchen and council members, I will just read my letter, which I composed sort of quickly last evening, if that's all right with you. I would like to say that it is fair to say that the San Marino Center needs attention and definitely has been inexplicably and inexcusably neglected. However, I oppose approving a costly renovation of the San Marino Center at this time on the grounds that the citizens should first understand the history of this building, a potential historic resource, in order for the citizens, the taxpayers and the community to make a fully educated decision on the future of this local landmark before such time as significant exterior changes are considered. If it were to be renovated, the current architecture should be celebrated and enhanced, not obliterated or morphed into a reflection of the new library, which involved the demolition of another landmark, a great building by an award-winning architect. Now, we have the right to know the name of the architectural firm who did these conceptuals and published them through our Public Works Department in the newspaper. And we also need to know how much has been spent to date. If this building were to be changed in aesthetic, it would be much more appropriate to have it complement the historic middle school auditorium, which has so much history within the context of our local community. At the same time, we are still awaiting the replicated rose arbor, which was unjustly demolished, and the formulation of a long-term maintenance plan for that beautiful rose garden with community engagement. We must also prioritize the pursuit of a long-term tenant at Stoneman School and strive quickly to get the hot water restored, which I believe may have been a manipulative ploy to suggest that this building was worthless. Yes, these should be among our priorities. And I'm not even going to get into Billy, the ghost. With regard to the San Marino Center, I think a full examination of the merits of a project should always be fully completed before proceeding. The city and public school student body have also recently endured the construction of the new middle school wrestling center, which many found questionable and which involved. of the new middle school wrestling center, which many found questionable and which involved the demolition of an important WPA building, which was the historic middle school gym, despite falling enrollment, insufficient funding, and what appears to be a failure to complete the required EIR per sequa. There are meaningful, simple things that our local community and charitable organizations could contribute to enhance this strong, well-built structures aesthetics, which the community drives by daily on Huntington Drive, residents and visitors to our city. I urge the current city council to exercise restraint. Residents have been inexcusably under-informed, and I would suggest that the council move to table discussions until such time as the city distributes information from a certified architectural consultant on this building's historic narrative. And after our consultant, Mary Ringhoff, comments on this property in relation to our historic survey and provides a context statement. Lastly, the assessment of the roof of this building owned by the city currently and at the time of purchase would also be of great interest to the public. The roof is obviously very important, and I feel that, I feel confident that the foundation is stable. But those are my comments, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or email?
We do have a written comment from, from Ms. Barlow, which I will read. Renovate the San Marino Center into a state-of-the-art community center. San Marino Center is functionally obsolete as well as rundown and in need of renovation. It needs to be integrated with the Crowe Library in order to provide the public services needed by the community in a coherent fashion. Recycling this, recycling the building is an excellent strategy for energy conservation of embodied carbon, one of the biggest actions that can be undertaken for sustainable building practices. It should be a strong public statement for our community, and that is the aspect of the current proposed design that falls short. It's a very weak mashup right now. They need to actually use the design vocabulary of the Crowe Library. If they're going to do this, it has to be done right, because they're going to be living with it for the next 50 years. One more comment. Architects should be selected on the basis of qualifications, not fee, under the, or professional guidelines from the AIA.
And she also, can you start again?
Sure. For the, the second comment was architects should be selected on the basis of qualifications, not fee, professional guidelines from AIA. And there's also one emailed comment from her regarding the design. The overhaul of the existing building is a good idea, but it is a very weak mashup design right now. They need to actually use the design vocabulary of the Crowe Library. If they're going to do this, it has to be done right, because they're going to be living with it for at least the next 50 years. Ditch the old gable roof, clean up the design vocabulary by using one hip roof up higher, and then use block forms and trellises. And those are the only comments we have right now.
Thank you very much. And if there are any more, let us know. We'll bring it back to council then for our discussion. I think I don't remember who I started with. I'm sorry. I was trying to keep track, and I, the checks aren't in really alignment. So council member Jacobowski, do you want to start off? Since I don't think you've led for a bit.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in support of the renovation of the building that we are currently in. There is clearly a lot of discussion today about how to move forward after, if we do have consensus on this, and I will address that later. But for general purposes, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Thank you. Council member Wong?
Yes, some of the historical value to me of this building, the first time I was here was for my middle school graduation party. I don't know if council member Todd was young enough, but, but I think perhaps we should have a committee with residents, so that way they can have more input into this. And then I think I can proceed with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Tal?
In fact, council member Wong, my junior high school, we call it junior high school back in that, we had many functions here, watching, in fact, watching movies up there. But if you take a look at this building now, there is an obsolete nature to it. I agree we should move carefully, not necessarily slowly, not necessarily quickly, but just carefully. And, and that is why I've often encouraged getting as much community input as possible into, number one, the use, and number two, the design. I have no idea, just because I danced with, with my wife here back in eighth grade, this makes it historical, but.
I'd say so.
But I'm sure she'd approve the, recommending the renovation as well.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
I, I think this is an important project to go forward carefully with, make sure we do it right, because it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I think it'll be a great place for rec to relocate, and as a council, we'll finally be free to, to address the right solutions for Stoneman. So I support this.
I support moving forward with it as well, but I also agree that I think the drawings and facade that we have, I agree with some of the comments that it seems to fall short of what I would think this building should be, because we are going to have it be a hallmark for our community, and as a community center, it should reflect a higher degree of architecture and historic nature of our city. So I would like to see a greater focus on choosing an architect. I like council member Wong's idea of having a committee perhaps, our commission, I don't know what the right word is, of volunteers from our community who have some experience. And I also think it should go before planning department and, or planning commission, excuse me. And I think it would anyway as part of the process, because there might be variances in CUPs not involved. Then I would like to go before planning commission, because I know that they're the appropriate body that we have right now, and they're well-trained in this. So I think I, I would recommend that at a minimum, and whether, I don't know if there's interest among the council members to actually have a group of residents to kind of spearhead this, then I am supportive of that as well. But as far as budget and for today, if you want to go forward, I would support the line item being included in our budget. But I think the process to get to the best for our community should be drawn out in order to accommodate design and the needs of the community in a broader sense.
All right, so we will include this in the CIP. In case the council's not aware, we have been working with the two recreation liaisons, council member Tal and vice mayor Yudi, on the process board for the San Marino Center since they're involved. Obviously, they're only two, they don't present, represent the full, the full council, but we will consult with them on what to bring back before you in terms of potentially council input onto your process and so forth.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you just said. The council, it's now before the council, so now the council, this is our community center. It's not a rec center. So I thought that we all are giving our input right now on the direction for the process going forward. And we've given direction that the amount should be included.
Right, and I've said, we've taken that direction, which is what was agendized for you today. And then we'll just talk to the two of them about what recommendations to bring the full council about how to move forward with the process. That would be a different discussion. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that they're authoritative in terms of what moves forward, but you did appoint two people to work with us on this item, and so we're trying to.
I don't think we appointed, that's, that's what I'm not getting. I, we have pointed two rec department liaisons. We also have planning commission liaisons who do design, go to those meetings every month, some of them do. So we have people who have, we have a former planning commissioner on the council.
All right, then I guess what we need is some direction from you today on how we're moving forward. It's been our understanding that we were working with the two liaisons related to the issue to bring you then recommendations. But if that process is different, we just need to know how to move forward so the staff isn't in a difficult position.
It always happens to you. It happens at your office.
It always happens to me, I know, it always happens in my office, so.
She presses a button.
I know.
Help me, help me right now.
It's amazing.
Perhaps we can ask some input from city club president or, I don't know, whoever, you know, whoever uses this facility.
So representation of a community groups?
Right.
I think we need, I may think we need to be really high level initially and then drill down into it. I, I agree with everything that's being said, but we need to be methodical and just get the initial steps there. So however the group wants to take that, I think we can determine a little bit further out exactly who from the community will be involved. But just maybe one, two, three next steps only in terms of high level.
How about staff can we back a recommended plan about this?
I, I take no ownership. If, if the mayor wants to be part of that committee, and she and the vice mayor can meet, I mean, and come up with the, the next plan. It's really just trying to figure out what our steps are, and then we bring it back to us, and we decide whether we approve those steps. Is that what it is?
So then, okay, so the next steps will.
Have them recommend what the steps are going to be, and we decide whether or not, we as a group decide whether or not that's what we want.
Right. Thank you, and, and then we'll see, the next item, is that enough direction?
Sure.
You didn't hear any sirens, so it must be.
Yeah, the sirens went by already. So we'll, we'll discuss with you, or you can discuss with council and come back with the next.
I would do now, because I would, sort of like, kind of like that. You do the safety, safety.
And we don't have any other comments or anything going on right now, right? Okay. So we can move on to fire station health and safety upgrades?
I think we'll defer to the chief on this one.
Good afternoon, council. This is a modest remodel of the fire station. It's really predicated on health and safety. The biggest, the lion's share of this remodel is really a modern flooring. What we currently have is carpet. It's really a receptive bed for a lot of things, and none of them are good. Infectious, infectious stuff. Primarily MRSA, which is, which is commonly found in a lot of the places that we respond to. It's a really virulent infection that's difficult to get rid of. We fortunately avoided that, but it's due to just really rigorous cleaning of the fire station. But we have seven people there every day, and they wear things out. This is again carpeting appliances and then moving around cabinetry. We did complete a portion of this already, which was the kitchen cabinetry. We did that with existing funds this year and existing elbow grease of firefighters. And it came out quite nice, they've completed that project, so this will actually be reduced by about $3,000. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Council member Tal?
Yeah, you say it'll, it is carpeted flooring throughout the building, so not just the, the kitchen is, is shown here, but so you're going to what surface throughout the building?
We're going to have to look for a non-carpet solution for the living area of the fire station. And that's, because the apparatus floor is concrete, and really none of that's going to be touched. The rest of the fire station is carpeted, and it's, and it's really a maintenance-intensive chore to continue to keep that clean. And my fear is we, we develop, if somebody develops an infection with having that, just that receptive bed.
Thank you.
Council member Wong?
What would the annual maintenance cost be after renovation?
Actually, our, our maintenance costs may go down a bit. With the installation of these appliances, we'll have the ability to wash our own turnout clothing in the fire station. So that would be about $2,000 to $3,000 reduction each year in our, in our turnout repair and maintenance. We spent almost $2,000 last year repairing our oven, so I would see those costs go down. That was a one-time cost. We'd likely see our carpet cleaning cost, which is between 5,000, 500 and 1,000 a year, those costs would also be reduced.
How much is a new oven?
New oven for the fire station, I think we specced out at like $15,000. This is a commercial-grade appliance that's used twice every day by, like I said, seven people, 365 days a year. So it gets quite a bit of use. The current one does break down, and it's, it was a donation, I think, 15 or 20 years ago.
Great, thank you.
Council member Jacobowski?
I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
I just wanted to have you thank your staff for doing some of the work themselves. I appreciated that. I think I saw them working there when I visited the City Hall campus, so I appreciate that, and if that saves, ends up saving money, I appreciate that for the city. Do we have any questions or comments online on this item?
We don't have any public comment on this item.
Yeah, I'll bring it back to council then, and council member Wong, what's, do you have a conclusion?
No, I can't support this.
Council member Jacobowski? Yes? Council member Tal?
I can support it.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
I'll support it as well. Thank you very much, chief. Can we take a two-minute break? Because I know that we have some, a couple of big ones still coming on the clock. Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have Huntington Drive and Mission Street beautification project. And I see we have director Sabates.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I hope that the council was able to listen in on the city club meeting where I, I threw a little plug on this item, of course, I had to. But, but really, this is a two-pronged approach with this item. It's, it's of course the optics with our businesses to show that, that the next step is really investment. And of course, there's the tangible pieces, which include, you know, the actual modifications to the streets. And specifically, what I'm, what I'm looking to do is really a beautification project, a walkability type of project. That includes having to look at the sidewalks, the curbs and gutters, looking at landscape features, landscape buffers. There is an inclusion of signage, gateway signage, that kind of thing. So the intention here is to really differentiate between the actual road itself and the pedestrian areas. And with, with, with that said, if, if, looking at the numbers, of course, there's a good example of, of a, of a figure on this table now of $50,000 just for 50 trees. And so I did cost out the various pieces of what I had in mind with relation to this project, and it does come fairly, fairly close to what we're looking to spend here. As we discussed in other projects on, on this list today, there is a component that's involving design work, and that's about 10% of, of the funds that you see on the line item. First step, of course, of course, I'm not asking for the council to, to, to fund a million dollars and let me go forward, but there's various pieces involved, and it's very slow methodical process. And of course, I have the, the pleasure of working with, with two council liaisons on our economic development team, and then they've certainly guided my direction moving forward, as well as the other members who are, as you all know, are business members. And so the, the first stage of this, of this project is going to include really an assessment as well as design work. And we're looking at likely two, two contracts if this were to move forward. We're looking at a contract for design work, which the council will have full authority over, and also a contract for the actual construction project. And of course, the council will have full authority over that as well. And so there are various steps that are needed before we just start spending some of these funds. And the council, as well as our, our economic development, will help guide that process moving forward. And so with that said, I open for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, director Sabates. Council member Tal?
What's your timeline for this?
Well, the timeline, of course, the funds are for the, for the fiscal year. Realistically, this type of a beautification project, we're looking at two street segments, Mission and Huntington Drive. Realistically speaking, this could take at least two years max to develop. We can certainly. develop. We can certainly streamline this within the year with obviously the help of my colleague, Public Works Director, who, who will certainly guide me in, in respect to the procurement process for sidewalk projects. We can certainly look to developing a plan to have this done in a year. But at the, at the direction of council, we can certainly look at, at the project or a game plan to phase out the project if that's what the council is looking at.
Well, I was thinking more of the phasing out of the project because you're going to lose the opportunity to do anything in, you know, starting from Thanksgiving until after the first of the year, because we do not want to run into the same problem we were into, redoing the streets. So I, I'm not looking for a streamlined, I'm just looking for something realistically, because once again, you want to make sure you do it right. And, and get the input that we need necessary to do this.
And I would, I would agree with that. And as long as I've been here, my long-term understanding is, is very thorough and methodical in how we approach really any project. And so I tend to take that experience into this project.
Which is, council member Wong?
Yes, I enjoy walking on Huntington Drive and I think this is a great project. However, you know, I need more information. I want to see this design in order for me to make a better decision. Thank you.
And if I could just add to that comment, there's a lot of inspiration that we're getting with respect to other communities and how they've done this project very well. A very local community near us is Montrose, if you want to take a look at that, that downtown area. It is, is sort of an inspiration that we, it's just one of the inspirations that we've taken to look at how we can move this project forward. So if you're looking for an actual physical location that you can sort of picture or visualize what, what we're after, that's a good local city to drive up to, to see it.
I appreciate that. Thank, council member Jacobowski? Questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
No questions. I'm intrigued by this.
And I apologize, I didn't leave any time for, for our two liaisons to, to comment on this project. Now they can, of course.
Okay. And I just had a question. If you were to phase it and spread this out, as you discussed, I think in our original CIP proposal, it could be phased and put in more than one year. So perhaps over two years, taking one area, whichever your choice or whichever the committee wants to tackle first, so to speak, because they're very different, obviously, just in terms of size and scope between Huntington and the Mission. So I just, my question to you was, how would you do that? I mean, would you divide it geographically like I just suggested, or are there waves that you would focus on? Or have you and Director Throne and the committee discussed actual implementation once you get some design elements done?
Yeah, of course. Like I mentioned, the guidance is going to come directly from our Public Works Director on really how to manage this type of project. I think geographically it makes a lot of sense. And I would certainly, if we're looking at a geographic approach to this, Mission would, would be a much, much simpler project moving forward initially and then looking at Huntington Drive. Huntington Drive is a, has got obstacles and various challenges to try to incorporate the walkability design that I'm after. It is, it is very much an easy, an option to, to phase a project. And of course, with the guidance, I'll be looking to, to see how that's, that's tangible.
So just to follow up on the question. So perhaps then, if it's achievable, then Mission would be a focus for the short term, like in the next. And I appreciate a council member Talt's comment. Also, you don't want to do a major construction in an area around holidays and shopping, et cetera. And, and now with COVID, perhaps that throws another wrench in it, but it might be also a good time to do the plans and then try to roll it out in the fall early enough that we could capture some improvements in that area. And maybe even outside dining, because that's becoming now a greater possibility for us. So I hope that those are in and I thank you for that consideration. Do we have any questions or comments from the public at this time, either by Zoom or by email?
We do not have any comments on this item.
Thank you very much for checking. All right. So then I will bring it back. Council member Talt, did you have a conclusion or?
Well, I would like to see it spread out over two years. There, there's a lot of issues to unpack here and, but if, if we budgeted all this year, I would understand that. It's just that we've got issues with Metro, Next Gen, we don't know how to incorporate that in. Maybe our focus should be the first year on Mission, the second year on, on Huntington Drive. I, I, if it's your opinion that if, maybe we should put it all in this year's budget, that is fine. However, I do want to be careful once again, spending city resources on something that, that may become obsolete as a result of a larger government's input.
Council member Wong?
Well, yes, I can support it.
Council member Jacobowski?
I'd like to say this has been a really active work group online during COVID. And I deeply respect the minds of the business owners who are on this committee. And as Director Sivantes mentioned, there's inspiration in other cities, but this group has just been phenomenal, business owners in town giving their input. And I'm quite taken, these are obviously successful folk who've been around for a while, that they're willing to give of their time to make it even better. They've got their own success, so they, they want more for others. I would like to see this all budgeted at once so that we know that the money is there. I'm positive it will be used carefully, wisely, with good input. And I like the discussion that came up today of taking into account times of the year, the locations, and getting that master plan nicely detailed before the work begins. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Again, I'm intrigued by this and I thank you, your, your leadership on this as well. And I really trust you and the group to bring back some, some clever designs for us to consider. So I support this.
And as far as budgeting it all this year?
I'm indifferent. I mean, we got, we got a million dollar sort of kind of number there. And I trust you to be smart with how we, you know, go forward with this. And if it splashes into one year or two years or three years, it's fine. It's just, you know, make sure we do it right. This is another, one of those once-in-a-lifetime decisions.
I am supportive of this. I appreciate the work done by our council liaisons as well as the committee. And it's great to have people in the industry as well work with Director Sivantes on this. And I'm excited to have improvements made and, and that will help our community members and as well as our local businesses. So this is, for me, is a huge win. And it's exciting to be able to do this and overdue in some areas for sure. But I do appreciate, I, council member Talt's observations, particularly because Huntington Drive itself and Next Gen and transportation issues are still very much in the offing. To actually go through design at this point may be premature. And that's my only caveat. So if we need to break out something and you could recommend a larger amount for plans and implementation in the missionary and, and then second year with actually the build that may change or vary because of how the buses, et cetera, transportation issues come, go forward in our community, that's my only concern as to what it makes sense. But I have no problem with the budget amount and I appreciate that this will be money well spent by all of you. So I don't know if that's enough of that direction. I heard, I heard yeses. Okay. Thank you. Next we have the library and barth
Good afternoon. The barth room currently, the, many of the council meetings are held there on a regular basis and the light, currently the lighting is, is not up to par. And so basically this is to design a better lighting system in that building?
Do we have any questions? Council member Wong?
So we're going to install new lights, like how many of them?
It currently needs to be designed. So I'm not exactly sure how many, but we need to bring it up to proper standards. So when we have council meetings and many, we have several events in there and programs, the lighting is, is not functioning the way that that would work better for, for those events.
So the $10,000 is only for the design?
Just the design.
Later we'll find out that the cost of installation. Okay. Thank you.
Council member Jacobowski?
So are we sticking with sort of what's been mentioned today as design being a minimum of 10% of cost? Is this going to be a pricey project? That one, I'm not exactly sure. I'm going to look over to Michael Throne.
One of the things that we would be working with the lighting consultant on is to optimize how much, how much the construction cost would be. And so part of the design would include what kind of uses are we currently using the space for. The council, I'm sure, has, has experienced if you're trying to give a presentation, the room can't be isolated for lighting. And if you're sitting there, you're trying to do task work, you can't see it's pretty lighting, but it's not really functional lighting. Part of what we would be doing with lighting consultant is keeping as much as we can and tincing with the least amount so that we can maintain the interior design at the same time and improve the lighting.
So since you often seem to have a feel for these things, might you give a broad range as your guesstimate? I mean, I really would like to know, is it a lot or could it be done moderately once we get this $10,000 spent? I mean...
I think it will be, council member, a modest amount because we're not looking to, I've had the experience of turning a room like the barth room into a city council TV studio. And we spent about $75,000 on just lighting. So we're, we're not going to go to that level. It just needs to be just enough so that the people who are using the room, if you're doing a presentation, you're not poorly lit, nor the people who are experiencing the presentation, they can see what's going on. It's going to be modest improvements. And so as with some of these very small projects, they're very unique and, and sometimes the design cost is as much as the construction cost. But it won't be any large dollar amount. And I am not going to go out, this is the closest I'm going to get to tell you how much I think it's going to cost, which is why we wanted to do the design first. And then at that point, we would be obliged to come back to council with a funding request and then we, we can have those discussions as well. Certainly, Community Services Director Espinoza will be working with the library, library board and library staff to make sure that whatever it is that we're going to be messing with their building is going to be consistent with how they see it to be operated.
Thank you. Council member Talt?
Are we going to be doing, be doing lighting, lighting design as part of the renovation of the San Marino Center?
All right. That was my point.
Oh, yes.
Then why don't we tie it in and say, hey, you get this, but you got to do that? I mean, I don't know if that's possible with public contracts, but, and then I also look at the next request, which is a tinting of the windows. And so that's probably, it requires some lighting. I, I would like to see us include within the San Marino Center renovation, a, a lighting consultant, take a look at the library, tie that all in. Cheaper by the dozen, isn't that what they say?
You will most likely see some economy of scale, but there's also a timeliness component of it. The, but I, I think that we can craft an appropriate scope of work that would push forward some of these smaller design tasks for the library, while they're also grinding through the, the public process to work on this building. So that is a very good suggestion.
Thank you. Once a year I have one.
Then Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yeah, I, I think we would push this and combine it like Mr. Talt was saying, because I would expect the barth room usage to change when the San Marino Center is remodeled and reopened. And so council meetings might come here rather than there, so then that could be baked into the design of the lighting for whatever room here. So I think, I think looking at both, both at the same time makes sense.
If I might, Vice Mayor, I've been reaching out to some of the architects that we've been working with and been asking them about COVID-related design changes. And no one knows what that's going to look like. And so that's a very good point, that this may wind up being your council chambers. And so when we think about this building, we may have to think in that direction, prepare in that direction, not necessarily put in, you know, Michael, $75,000 of light, you know, HD corrected studio lighting, but at least be able to have the flexibility to do that if the, the other facilities we have are, may not be appropriate and we have no idea what the building codes are going to do in the future, what the health code is going to do. So...
Yudi, lights everywhere.
Only, only when you're not in the room. That's what, you dial it up. I'm sure the other chief, if he was here, he would probably support, support that as well. But first on the fire station.
All right. Thank you. And I had the same. I wrote down premature and admitted that we should put this with the contract for San Marino. So if there's proof. And so I, I think that that makes sense for right now, that we push this, we'll remove this for next year's CIP and then Michael will perhaps incorporate it into the, the San Marino Center. Right. And I appreciate that. Then we also will have a good, also what, what groups are using where, for what. And hopefully we'll have a little bit more of that. So thank you. The library and window tinting as well is the next request.
This has come before you, I think in the past. What's happening is the way the room is designed, the sun beats down and there's a couple of things that happen, the books, the furniture, the carpet. There's, it gets damaged due to the, the heavy amount of sun that comes through there. And that's a design thing. We've thought about putting some kind of drapery up there, but the window tinting seems to be a little less expensive and we think that that will also do the trick.
Council member, sorry, council member Talt?
I have no questions.
Council member Wong?
No questions.
Council member Jacobowski?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions.
No question. Well, I do have a question. And this is actually the, is that because there's a concept that in the new plans of a membrane roof, is that what, that, when you call when you put windows on top? Or what, what windows? These are the ones that are directly over the main reading room.
Yes.
Because that roof extends and higher, let's say, and windows were added to bring light into that room. Am I correct?
Yes.
And is it going on all the windows because it's always a problem? Or is it the ones that are, for example, east and west because it's kind of laid out in an east-west manner? Or just doing them all?
It would be the, the windows that face the sun in the clear story, which are those windows way up at the top at the, at the ceiling. And those that would be facing, getting the sun during, during the day. Did they, they do have, shared with me that they have a quite, quite a glare problem and they're worried about fading of the, the library materials and whatnot. And putting window tinting on is a very straightforward hire contractor. He's done in a day and he goes away and you write a check.
Thank you. Did we have any comments from the public on this capital budget request?
We do not.
All right. So let's bring it back. And I think it was, council member Talt?
Yeah, I, I think this is a good use of our funds because it's going to save costs elsewhere.
Thank you. Council member Wong?
I think that for San Marino Center, please make sure that you don't use the same architecture firm that designed the library, because of wherever it's supposed to be dark, it's not. And wherever it's supposed to be... because of wherever it's supposed to be dark, it's not, and wherever it's supposed to be bright, it's too dark. I think we can still wait on this. Thank you.
So did you say you think we can still wait on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski. I can go either way. I guess I can support this. Vice Mayor Udi?
I can support this as well.
Thank you, I can as well. I know it's been an ongoing problem. And I appreciate the explanation, though it's covering all in the main area. That's what we're focusing on.
The library computer room renovation is the next capital budget request.
It's a large computer room and what's happened is it's no longer needed the way it used to be. It's kind of, it's changed uses. But what is need is study rooms. That's very, very popular. They have to sign up in advance when the library is open. And we have to monitor that. So that large computer room that's no longer needed, we're proposing to do some construction, put up a wall because there's also the area where the Dacom still goes on. So we would be able to get another computer room out of there. There's been some conversation with the foundation and the foundation is interested in this also. And they've proposed, you know, that they will assist with this. What they'd like to do is that they'd like to help pay for construction, but they'd like the city to pay for the design.
Design being the $2,500?
Correct.
And they will fundraise for the build costs?
That's what they've mentioned. I mean, you know, it's a donation, it's never written in stone, but they've, it's been, they've talked about it at their meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski. I presume this would have predated, but I remember discussion about this from some of the library board members as just an issue. There has been no input from that body about the layout of this and the needs because of non-meeting. Is that correct?
I've only had conversations with the foundation. So I don't know if you're referring to the Friends or any other of the other bodies.
The board, library board.
This is something that they very much want.
Thank you.
The board discussed this.
That's what I'm looking for and--
Yes, the board did discuss this.
Did they feel that, for example, something that would work well would be with-- where is it here? Changing the design as it's proposed, they gave input into that too?
Yes, they did.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Have you thought about, you know, keeping it as is for the future just in case recreation department wants to have any class in there?
No, we haven't actually thought about that. It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, so maybe we should hold and wait until everything is said and done. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
Yeah, I'm, given everything I've heard today regarding how things may change, we may be jumping the gun on this. However, in the sense that the foundation is willing to pay for the hefty cost if all we're doing is paying for the design, in the engineering, I'm in favor.
Vice Mayor Udi?
I mean, if the foundation is going to step up $2,500, it sounds very, very reasonable. And I agree, we better get our arms around what the post-COVID separations and requirements might be and don't pull the trigger too quickly.
I guess, yeah, my concerns are similar. I just think this might be something that we have to postpone for a year, given space, to make a bunch of small spaces for people to study intensely. And then now we've divided up a bigger room that might be used for classes or something else into a lot of little rooms. And then we're going to end up taking it out because people no longer can gather intensely in a small space. You know, I've seen them packed, I have seen the meeting rooms in use and I think it's a good thing we have some there. And I know that there's a wait, and I remember this has been under discussion. But I, for one, think it's premature, given that we don't know what's going to be proper spacing and things like that, whether that's going to be building codes or whatever for rooms and the occupancy of those rooms. So for me, although I support that and appreciate the offer, I would just like to postpone it until next year's budget when we're in a better position to make a determination. Because as you know, I appreciate that we might get the money, but we might not. So in my mind, this should be--
Perhaps we change this request from $25,000 to $2,500 for the design.
And then we could decide on the build aspect longer term?
The build is the foundation's.
Well, but that's still having it--
Okay.
It's okay. I'd rather postpone like councilmember Wong was suggesting. So I don't know.
I think you were in the questions section--
Yes.
--that moved into discussion. So don't have a full vote tally in the moment.
I'm sorry. And I also didn't get comments. I am not keeping track. So after questions, which we're closing now, do we have any public comment from anybody online, either by Zoom or email, on this particular budget request?
We do not have any comments on this item.
Thank you. So bringing it now back for conclusions, which I thought I had heard and so I went with it. Councilmember, who started this, Wong?
Yes, I would postpone this.
Councilmember Jacobowski? I'm really torn because this is something that the board supports, the foundation apparently wants to sponsor. I would like to do something in this fiscal year to sort of validate where they're at, if not full build out, perhaps as Councilman Udi suggested, or Vice Mayor, the engineering. So I would be in support of something at this point, not delaying it the whole year. Councilmember Tal?
I would be approving the $2,500. I would be in support of approving $2,500, but do not start the design until after the first of the year when we have a better idea as to what the world will look like then.
Do you mean the first of the fiscal year or the first of the calendar year?
First of the calendar year.
Vice Mayor Udi?
I would amend this to be the $2,500 for the engineering and trust Director Throne not to start the engineering until he had clarity on what we're engineering.
Here's where I think we stand, as you try to figure out how you're supposed to vote on this, Mayor. We have councilmember Wong, who is saying, let's just postpone the item in full. Councilmember Jacobowski would like to do something, although not the full thing. So I'm going to extrapolate that maybe she'd be in support of the $2,500. And then you have two others that are already in support of the $2,500 as well for design. Is what the lay of the land appears to look like. So then I will assume that we're going to go forward with the $2,500 for design and then we can discuss the build and the appropriateness of that.
All right, that concludes part one of the CIP discussion. Congratulations. The next two items, my guess is that the next one is probably relatively short, which is the discussion to revisit on tire balancing, which Director Throne will lead. And then after that concludes, then the only remaining item is on citywide computer replacement, which Director Chung will lead. So Michael.
Can you tell me where the page is? Though I can't find the--
Certainly.
I get the, I have the graphics, but I don't have the--
This would be pages 45, 46, 47, and 48.
Right, but is there the summary sheet somewhere, like how much?
No, we did not include the summary sheet. But the amount that was in the CIP was $15,000 and it would be for both of these machines. They're once used to change the tires and once used to balance. You cannot do it on the same machine, given the size of the tires that we currently use on our trucks and our, some of our fire rescue vehicles. So what the council had asked was just to bring back the specifications for that so that you could see what your $15,000 appropriation would purchase.
And is it the $15,000? I haven't added it up or--
Oh, yeah, it's--
I mean--
It would be just under $15,000. The cost would be 8240 plus 15, 645, which is $14,000 in round numbers.
Thank you. Councilmember Tal, we'll start with you.
Oh, I see where it is. It's all, it's some accessories, the product options, that are the 525 and the 775. And, okay, you know, I have no questions.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions.
Councilmember Tal? I'm sorry, Wong. Sorry, sorry. I apologize.
What is the lifespan for these two machines?
These are at least 15 years. The current piece of equipment we have, I think we exceeded its lifespan by probably about five years. So these, if we maintain them and treat them well, they'll last 15 or 20 years.
The current ones that we have, have they been broken down or have they--
The one that we, the one that we have is 20 years old and it no longer is able to work on the size tires and wheels that we have. All of our police vehicles, everything is larger. The wheels are larger, the rims are larger, the tires are heavier. When you mount those together, try to balance it, the equipment we have is really not safe or suitable to do that. So this moves us from how we were operating, how our fleet was 20 years ago, into how our fleet is and also looking ahead with the purchases of the patrol cars, looking ahead as, you know, this is the size equipment that we're buying and using and this is the size of the tool we need to maintain them.
Great, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Are there any comments or questions online?
We do not have any comments on this item.
Okay, to bring this back, councilmember-- sorry. Councilmember Tal? Do you have a conclusion about this item?
Since we need it, I mean, the only other choice would be to contract all this out. We don't have the equipment to do what we've always done. We need to purchase the new equipment. So I'm for it.
Yes, I do have a question then. What is, how much if you send a truck that you, we currently have in our fleet, out for balancing and tire changing? I have no idea if you send it to all tires or whomever is a local purveyor that you use. How much is it to have wheels balanced and tire change done by an outside place?
Well, there's two, there's two-- what's the word I want to use here? It's very late. There's two components to look at. One is buying this piece of equipment, or these two pieces of equipment, they last 15 years. It's $1,000 a year. We definitely, if we sent things out, it would definitely cost at least $1,000 a year. But maybe more importantly than the cost is the timeliness of it. We can take a tire off a vehicle, replace it and put it back on the vehicle in the moment. So we often, and I see this from my office because I'm right in front of the fleet, a patrol car will come up, it's got a flat. Less than 15 minutes later, boom, it's back out on the street. If I had to send that tire out, it's gone for a while, that vehicle, unless I have an appropriate spare and a whole list of, and a whole, you know, a supply of spares. That patrol car is going to sit there for a lot longer than 15 minutes. So this gives us the benefit of being able to react during the weekdays, during off hours, during weekends, because I can get a guy in here to change tires. And that's really what the great benefit is to purchasing.
Thank you. And I have no problems with this, so, thank you. And so we have the citywide--
Last but not least, would you like to take a five-minute recess before we start this item?
No.
All right. Director Chung?
We're all fried, so we'll go--
I'll be quick. When we came to the city council back with the CIP, I noticed originally 45 computers. And the reason for that was being that there was a lot of staff computers that were being pushed out and we came to 2021 requesting, and it's still our staff's recommendation for the 45, being that they were on average about 4.5 years in their life cycle. And most of these computers are three to five years on the enterprise computers. So that's what was our proposal. Now, the city council came back and asked that is there security-driven computers that are critical? And so I went back, I spoke to Intelises and we brainstormed and said, okay, let's take a look at this again. Being that in the current environment that we are with COVID also, what is it that's mission critical? And what I provided to the city council was page 50, which is a schedule, and then the subsequent list of all computers in the city, which is pages 51 through 54, and then a diagram that really lists out basically all the floor plans of all the computers that are throughout the city. And so we looked at it and said, okay, for 2021, there are two computers that are Windows 7. Those really are mission critical. They need to be replaced, being that they're prone to security. Then they came, other computers that were, running Windows 8.1. Those are the 13 computers. And if you look at page 52 in the middle section, that's where the 27 new computers that we are proposing. So the two at the top are Windows 7. Those have to be switched. Now, the other 3 to 15, those are running Windows 8.1. And those are not mission critical, meaning the patches from Microsoft will be provided, but they're also very old. So we took into consideration two facets there. And that is why it's on this list as well. And then the remaining 16 to 27 computers, those are really the fact that we had to brainstorm and figure out a schedule, being that we didn't want to come back to council again next year and ask for another 30, 40 computers, being that they're going to be another year old, meaning they're going to be pushing six years. And so we thought it would be prudent to have a schedule that really has a replacement cycle in place so that the next two, three years, you're not requesting a big bulk of computers, but more of a relative 25 this year, 20, I believe, 23 next year, and then so on and so forth. So that was our rationale in going into updating our schedule. So ultimately, our recommendation is the 45, but we understand that it's really council instruction on if they want to move with our new proposal to 27. Or if you have other questions for me, I'm open for, to assist with any questions.
Just so I understand, because I don't know how this is adding up. The 45 are, excuse me, the 45 or the 27 are what are at the bottom of page 52?
When you say the 27, that's the in the middle section, the middle right there, is that page 52? Do I have the numbers wrong?
I don't have it on the middle. Are we doing 20?
Yes, it's the bottom of page 52, the fiscal year 20 to 21, staff PCs, 27 total PCs.
Okay, so, and then just to complete that, the rest, whatever 45 minus 27 is, are where?
Are going to be pushed to 21, 22.
This, okay, so, and that's appearing, I'm sorry, because Dr. Marlowe has the same, I guess, pagination as we do. So those are included in the top of 53?
Yes.
Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And so, so questions? Who would like to lead off? Councilmember Wong?
Yes, so these are Microsoft Windows 10, how old are they? Are the 27 of page 52?
The years is reflected in the middle column, which should show 4.8 years. The 4.8 number, that's the years.
So five years is a lifespan for the computer?
It's three to five years. As I mentioned, we've been at, almost at a 4.5 year replacement cycle. But enterprise computers, being that they're worked supposedly eight hours a day, nine hours a day on the machines, they tend to, of course, after a year, just like our iPhones tend to slow down after a year-- just like our iPhones tends to slow down after a year, these enterprise items, you're using it for eight, nine hours a day, so it just naturally degrades slowly.
What do we do with the old computers?
Well, we replace them, and we usually don't have a way, to my understanding. If we can repurpose them, we will, but most of these are just too old, so we can't really repurpose them.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, I just need a bit of clarification. So I'm going to refer, if I might, to page 50. So we are looking at those 27 for a total of 35,5. Basically, half of the library this year, fiscal coming year, and then the other half, the following fiscal year, for the 32,875, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm getting a call on the city phone. Don't even use that.
The question was? Oh, I was asking if we were budgeting the library computers over the next two years because, following up on Councilman Wong's question about the age, part of those certainly look like they can wait a while, and it was confirmed. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tal?
First of all, thank you for going back and providing this information. On page 44, what is your page 44? Is that Citywide Computer Replacement Program?
Yes.
And that was the original? At the bottom, you say that 39 computers were placed at a final cost of $52,000. On page 49, you say 39 computers were placed at a final cost of $60,000. Which number is correct?
Wait, on page what? I'm sorry.
On page 44.
I saw the first, yes.
49 versus 49.
And then page 49?
Yeah, there's...
The table at the very bottom.
I'm going to run the numbers right now, being that the computers cost, each computer costs $1,315. That's, the desktop is $775. You add the office licensing, which is $225. And then you have the computer screen, which is $75. And then installation of the computer costs. So total of each computer's cost, $1,315. And when you multiply that by the 39 computers, that's $51,285.
So we've actually been under budget this year, then?
Yes.
Okay, we brought that in, the 39 or 40 computers that we have listed as being replaced in the fiscal year of '20, some are complete, some are still working on, okay?
Yes, we are still working through some of them.
That helps me. The, in the, the age that you list on these attachment, for example, in '21, '22, when you say computers 3.3, that's years old? That's as of today, not as when they're going to be replaced?
Yes, that's as of today.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Hopeful to see the schedules, thank you, and the maps. With the replacements in the library, are those public computers or staff computers?
These are staff computers.
I guess I'm also, I know, looking at the, I'll get the tables. Your attachment five for us, the first page of that, 51, in our packet, lists the, what you've done to date this year, which with the, on 51 through complete, I assume that's continued. Or you're in the midst of that, and that's what our budget is.
Yes.
And so there are 43 there, and that matches up with this number also on page 50, but it doesn't match up with the amounts of the, I think Councilmember Tal brought up page 44 and then page 49. So we had $60,000 budgeted for this last year, and you said, if I'm right, 51 is being spent for 39. And is, so that's because, I guess, three of these, the last three on page 51 are being decommissioned, so making no replacements? And is there one more that we've dropped off somewhere? The line, the laptop or something? I'm just trying to understand what we've replaced.
No, no, just the three that's decommissioned? I'm not sure with regards to the laptop, which one you're referring to on the laptop end?
Well, we, okay. It's neither here nor there. Okay, so then the next large swap are ones that are being replaced by Library Foundation. Those are what Vice Mayor Udi looked at, or just brought up. Those are the ones that they're paying for, and those are the public-use computers. I'm putting those in air quotes.
Yes, those are the 36 that will be replaced. We just issued the PLS, we can know those should be installed, yes.
And then we go to what is the proposal at the bottom of 52, excuse me, to be for next year? And so we now have, we have 27 on that list?
Yes.
So how does 27, at the math that you gave, and I can't do the math in my head, why do we have a capital budget request of $61,000? Or we don't? It's been revised down to 35. Okay. And so then, as part of that, my other concern is that items 16 through 27 for computers are 4.8 years old, but they all have the most up-to-date operating system. Sorry, operating system. And so I wouldn't think that those would be a security risk. There may be wear and tear that we'll have to deal with eventually. But I thought we were focusing on ones primarily, which would be the top 15, I guess, that are actual dangers to our security. And I noticed that even in the following year, there's the first four for '21, '22 that are up there that have very old, I mean, 8.1. You can't assume that there are security patches on those. So I'm just wondering, thinking that, does it make sense to move those four up and drop the ones that are, are still running 10, at least for the next year? And then, obviously, this will take time, and we'll have another proposal next year. But then we start proceeding in a more age-appropriate rendition if we were to reconfigure this? Would that make sense to you, and is that possible? And then there's some on that next year that don't have a lot of information. The 16 through 22 on top of page 53. Or my 53. I know it's on, you could...
It's my 53 also.
Right, we're on the same, but I think, I'm sorry, it's hard for Paul because he doesn't have the pagination that we have in our kit. But, oh, she's just looking at next year's projection list. Right, for us, it just starts at the top of page.
So I understand the Windows, anything before Windows 10, meaning 8.1, we are recommending. It seems like the first 15 you are okay with, but in regards to the remaining 16 to 27?
I think, Paul, I think what she's suggesting is, should we perhaps look at next year's items 1 through 4 because their operating system, 8.1, and switch those four out by moving them up and pushing four of the ones that we were slating for next year, items 16 and 27? Flip-flopping four, essentially.
And then we can again talk about how they're wearing, holding up, et cetera.
I understand. We could do that, that's not a problem.
Those are only three years.
The year-wise, they're still younger here.
Right, and so then, Mike, can we not just buy the updated? Then would, or maybe the answer is we buy an updated program? Or this needs to be investigated.
Yes, so Rick Balzer clearly wisely decided not to be here today.
He's actually on Zoom, though.
Oh, is he on Zoom? Hi, Rick.
I don't know if he's still on Zoom, but...
So it's our understanding that there's a combination of factors that would lead to desiring to replace a computer. The operating system is one, the age of the computer is another. And they're not necessarily mutually exclusive. They do interface with each other. My guess, although if he isn't, he's still on Zoom, we could probably just ask him, but my guess is that we would not want to upgrade the operating systems of the younger computers because literally a year and a half from now, they'll be at their maximum life. And that probably is not an ideal replacement cycle. So that's why you see some that are older but newer operating systems in one category, and others that are older operating systems but newer in a different category. But I imagine we could switch, we could swap four for four, and it's no problem.
And also, the thing to remember is that operating systems, when they were installed, they'd probably running on, even though the life of the hardware is younger per se, but the spec on that computer is probably based on Windows 8, not 10. So that might slow down the system more than anything. I did hear that from Scott. I got a queue that Rick is available? Okay, so he's there.
There he is.
If we have specific IT questions, we could always refer to Rick. It looks like he's hiding in the closet.
I know what he's wearing. He's all dressed up, that's pretty good. Thank you. I guess I'm the one that brought this up, and I'm sorry. But I'm trying to understand, you know, I have a problem overall with the amount of computers we're replacing and trying to find savings. And I appreciate you did the amount of work to come back with this. And so I had some questions about this and whether some of these tend to sell that our current operating system, Windows 10, can go later, longer, and maybe the remaining ones that seem to be unold and a security risk can come forward.
Yes, so there was an interesting thing that Microsoft did about four, three, four years ago when Microsoft, when the Office, I mean, I'm sorry, when the Windows 10 came out, they released it to the market early to be allowed to be used on computers as an experimental thing. And some of the computers were put on that path. But really, what we're doing is we're basing the machine age as well as the operating system recommendations. I did an audit last night quickly on the calls we're taking, and we actually are feeling about three to four calls a week on failing computers. And most of those are due to age, not operating system. So it is a combination of factors we use in the recommendation. And we do try to set up parameters to make sure we get the most use out of every machine we can, without running the situations of not only having something that has to be repaired and taking our guys' time away from other things they might want to be doing, but also whatever the staff impact of productivity is if their machine isn't working right and they're not able to perform the function.
So, hi, Rick. So do I take all of that to mean that you would not suggest flip-flopping the four? That it's actually the age for some of these that's driving the replacement more than the operating system between next year and the following year?
That would be our recommendation. I mean, we looked at these pretty hard to try to make sure that we could extend the life as much as possible. And based on what we're seeing, we would assess that those are going to cause more operational issues. Now, if we're only talking about four, and we, and there were just a desire to want to do that, we certainly could. But our recommendation would be to replace the ones we highlighted there as a way just to keep things running as best as possible. And also, we're going to be able to keep the integrity of the network security up with the machine replacement that exists today.
Thanks. Thank you. Did we have questions yet? I think that was questions, and now we return to the public.
We do not have any further comments on this item. Is there anybody left? We still have some, but no comments.
Thank you very much for checking. Okay, so bring it back for conclusions among council members. Councilmember Tal?
I would go with the recommendation of our consultant, replace the 27 we have listed this year and wait for the others as scheduled.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I can support this.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, and I offer special thanks to Director Chung for the breakdown of all of the computers. It was really helpful for us to process this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Udi?
I can support this, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I pass it.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor and council, thank you very much. We have had two lengthy, but not particularly bloody, meetings on the budget. I really appreciate your discussion and your thoughtfulness as we've approached all of these items. We will see you next week at a regular council meeting,